Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to the January 26, 2016 School Committee meeting. This evening, we really just have one agenda item, one of the most important we tackle all year, and it's the FY 2018 budget. Before that, however, I am going to invite public comment. Generally speaking, public comment happens when we hit the agenda item. So I would ask if you would like to speak to the FY 2018 budget, that you wait till we get to that, it will happen very quickly, that's pretty much our only agenda item. However, two people, or two groups, I should say, have specifically asked you to time constraints, if they could speak right at the outset of the meeting, and I'm going to allow that. So, we're going to have public comment in just a moment. Obviously, if you're here to discuss something that isn't the budget, this is also the right time to raise your hand. So, we'll do that, we have a quick consent agenda. I am going to do reports tonight because I have one for the committee, and then we're going to delve into the budget, and that is it. That is the focus for this evening. So, gentlemen, I'd like to ask you to kick us off, I believe you want to address the committee? Okay, I'm going to ask you to step over to that microphone. This is being taped by RCTV, and we want everyone to hear it when it's recorded, for the record.
Dear fellow citizens of Rhode Island, We're here tonight to discuss the matters of budget cuts.
As you well know, as has been proposed, that we cut middle school four language classes, as well as the second period of English Language Arts, ELA for short, in sixth grade.
We believe that these changes will not help the students already learn, to grow, to learn and grow.
Learning another language beyond our own, very own, is important not only to children, but to adults as well. When learning, when children learn a new language, they understand and respect the culture in a new way.
Learning as a child, you have better memory, and can remember and learn things easier than someone from high school.
Also, when these children grow up, their job options are greatly expanded, they could become a broadcaster analyst, a diplomatic services operational officer, an English foreign language teacher, an international aid and development worker, logistics and distribution manager, etc.
Not only does it affect our jobs, but others as well. Jobs today are based around the world, and with the access to the internet, we have become a world marketplace. The importance of having a knowledge base of other languages not only helps, but improves our ability to communicate. A reason to keep foreign languages in second period ELA is because that ELA is a very important subject.
Learning the English language is vital to the development of students. A second language benefits the learner in many ways, including...
Open a world of opportunities, gives your brain an intellectual challenge, establishes deep connections and cross-cultural friendships, gets an outside perspective about your own culture, becomes a better learner, increases the student's mental focus, reading and writing abilities, mathematics in school as well.
It also affects the ability to think critically in different environments, it enhances listening and memory, it provides a competitive edge in career choices, and four out of five jobs in the US are created as a result of cultural, cultural trade.
Speaking a foreign language improves the functionality of your brain by challenging it to recognize, negotiate meaning, and communicate in different language systems. The skill boosts your ability to negotiate meaning and other problem-solving tasks as well.
The potential elimination of foreign language in middle school affects me because my goal in life is to be a teacher or marine biologist. As you know, the ocean covers two-thirds of the world, so I ought to be a bi, I have to be, I would have to be bilingual. If I learn foreign language later in high school, I will have less of an opportunity to have an impact.
My goal in life is to attend MIT, and I need to have an educated experience in foreign languages to attend. If I start learning a foreign language in eighth or ninth grade, I won't remember all that I need to enter MIT.
When I graduate high school, going to college will be a top priority for me. If I maintain a high GPA and do well on my SAT, I will need all the help I can get to get admitted to a decent school. A quick Google search will show you all the research that I'm correlating accepted college applications with foreign language.
We strongly support an override in our commitment to promoting it to the community. Thank you for your time, au revoir.
Wait, before, before you go. Gentlemen, if you could just share your name and your age and what school you go to?
I'm Brody Walter, I go to Coolidge, and I'm in seventh grade.
I'm Zachary Nichols, I also go to Coolidge in seventh grade.
I'm Brody Walter, I also go to Coolidge in seventh grade.
Thank you so much.
Nice job, Ken.
Yeah, it was amazing. Your parents must be so insanely proud of you. I'm proud of you, and I just met you. Yeah, you're a credit to this whole system. Thank you, thank you for coming here tonight. Don't ever think your voice wasn't heard, I heard every word you said, we all heard every word you said, and it was so important that you came up, so, so thank you. Thanks for being here. Mr. Berman, I don't envy you following that, I don't think you could be half as articulate as they just were.
What do they say, never follow kids in Amos? I'm Barry Berman, member of the Board of Selectmen, and I appreciate you taking me out of order because I have to, I've got to come in after this, so I'm just going to make my remarks, and then unfortunately I have to leave, but I'm, I'm, I'm RCTV, I'm going to watch this when I can't sleep at night. And, so I just wanted to say, last night at the financial forum, I shared with you what keeps me up at night, and I want to share with you tonight about what kept me up last night, after the financial forum. We heard, and, and, you know, no one said it better than these three lads, I, I wish we hadn't door-to-door in the last override, I think we wouldn't be struggling as much as we are. So, fellas, make yourselves available. The fight is not over. So, I thought about it last night, about especially, and I think it was one of the residents who I think may also have been a, a, a school teacher or counselor, sort of went through it, and just sort of, basically, after a lot of people talked about, you know, the devastation of, of what these cuts are going to mean, basically looked at the five of us, and, you know, Mr. Amina, myself, and my three colleagues, said, "So, what are you going to do about it?" And, and so, realizing that there's really, that, that there's five people in the town of Reading that have the ability to at least keep this moving forward, and, and, you know, around three o'clock in the morning, I decided what I was going to do about it. And, and so, what I wanted to share with you, and the community at large, is that I am prepared to propose and to support, in the spring, an override, reduced in magnitude, obviously from last time, for a shorter duration, to restore the cuts. And I'm prepared to fight for that, and, and work with everybody here. There's a couple of things, though, before I can actually go out and, and, and do that definitively. And part of that deals with, sort of, why we didn't win it the last time. We went through a lot of the things. And I think there's a couple of things that, you know, obviously, the magnitude, the scope, we have the litigation, all, all that stuff, but there's a few things I want to address, part of which is, do we do a really hard enough job to really cut through all the stuff that we need, and did we really define what were the money was going to use for? So, so, for me, I'm going to support and propose it, but I need the school committee to do two things. One is, tonight, I think starting tonight and through Monday, you're going to go through your budget, and try to find, to the best of your ability, with open eyes, open hearts, open minds, is there a way, are there things that could be moved around that can reduce the magnitude of the teacher cuts? I know that there's not a 1.4 million dollars of things that you're just going to, I, I understand that. Is there a little bit? Is there something? Are there assumptions that could be challenged, are there line items that could be looked at? I know, you know, Dr. Doherty, you, you said this is, and you worked hard on this, this is the best of a bad situation. I, I need you guys to, to dig a little harder, work a little harder, show that, you know, yes, we've uncovered every stone, we've kicked under every rock, and that, you know, maybe there's a little bit of something that'll redo some of the magnitude of those cuts. And I don't have any propos, I don't have any proposals, I'm, I'm not, you know, this is your budget, and you have to do it. And really, you're the only ones who should be doing it. You know, you could go on social media and find all the budget experts, but it's really your budget, you need to do it. The second thing that I'm going to ask you to do, is that, assuming that we do get an override, and it does pass, that you identify the things that you're going to put back in. Part of the criticism, and, and even some of the letters that we got, and emails that we got, were saying that, "I wasn't really sure what it was going to go for." And I think, you know, starting with these three gentlemen, clearly, you know, what's needed, but to really kind of prioritize and say, "Okay, if we get the money, this is how we're going to do it," and to really identify, and obviously prioritizing the things, like putting some of the teachers back, some of the things that are really, the best things that will improve the classroom outcomes for, for students. And I think if we can identify, and we can prove, show the community that we've identified the need, it's clear, and, but that we've also gone out and we said, "We've looked at everything, we've looked at absolutely everything, and, you know, we challenged every assumption, and that if we get it, this is what we're going to spend it on," I'm confident that the people of Reading are going to listen, and they're going to, and they're going to put, they're going to give us the money that we need to run the town and run the schools. So I'm prepared to be the first one to raise my hand at the selectmen to support that, but this is what I'm asking from you tonight, and not just tonight, but really going forward through your budget. You know, we're, we're in the fourth quarter, but the game's not over, I think we can get this done. I think the town wants us to get it done, I think the town really wants to be able to support these. But, as a selectman, and hearing from people, not just, you know, the parents of school just, but everybody, I think that's what it's going to take to get it done. So, I'm with you, what we've done, you know, together, I remember 2009, 2010, when the economy and the world was falling apart, we worked together, the selectmen, the finance committee, the school department, the superintendent, the manager, you know, to really pull through. And I think we're going to do it again, I'm confident we're going to do, we have to do it again. But, in my estimation, in order to do that, we're going to ask smaller, we're going to identify what it is, and we're going to show the community, we're going to win that trust back, and we're going to show them, this is what we're going to do, and we're going to keep to it, because, and then we come back, we can just say, "How did we do?" And if we need it again, I think it'll be easier. So, with that, I will stop, let you guys sharpen your pencils, and do your work, but again, you know, this is, I'm feeling more confident than I am despondent, and, and I know we can get this done. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Berman.
And, have at.
Thank you very much.
Talk to you soon.
There's only one little, little pushback I'm going to give on that. I think you might be absolutely accurate that, and I'd agree with everything you said, so please don't, but I think that there, there may not have an awareness of what the override was going to go to on the school side, but we absolutely published it, and we tried to communicate it. So, at the time, there was a $1 million structural deficit, we said, "That first $1 million just keeps everything the way it is, nobody, no cuts, no program changes, we just keep the trains running," and there was an additional, I think, 1 million, just under 1 million. And we were literally a list, two curriculum directors at the district level to coordinate curriculum in humanities and STEM fields from pre-K through 12th grade, a middle school health educator for each of the middle school, so, with numbers next to it, so, so I just don't want anyone to feel like we didn't do that, we did.
No, and, and I apologize for, for, sorry.
But, but, but perhaps the communication channels could certainly have been stronger, I won't disagree with that.
I think the difference between October and January is that, you know, we're going to keep things the same, we're going to, we're, we're, but now, there are things that are, that have been identified as going away. And so, though, and I think that's what's brought out, you know, more people and more passion and more concern, and I think that that's why it's important to identify the things that, you know, if we get more money, this is what we're going to put back, and obviously, you know, how can you argue against the, you know, the foreign languages and, and the middle school stuff, they're taking the biggest hits? But, I, I think that people are going to want to hold us to, say, "Okay, we're going to do it," but they want to hold us to, and where's it going to go? And they, and they'll hold us to it. Just so you know, and I forgot to mention this, I had the same conversation with the town manager, and I told him the same thing that I'm telling you now publicly, and I said, "I need you to identify." You know, what are the things that if we get it, one, two, three, you know, and obviously, on our side, it's a, it's a little bit easier, it's public safety, it's, it's a few, it's a few other things that have identified as one of the biggest needs. Here, there's so many, and I think people just want to know that, if I give you the money, you're going to do it. And, and I think that that's really important, and I think that's the biggest difference between that, October, and now, and that, and, but I also think if, you know, people don't want to see, people do not want to see the devastation of the Reading Public Schools, they don't. Whether you have a kid in the school or not, whether you're a senior, or, or somebody who just moved to town, you don't want to see that. And I think we, it, it, we have to make the case, and, and that's how I think we have to do it, so.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson.
I just want to thank you for that, and, you know, I, I, I support what you're saying, and that we do need an override. You made the comment that we're in the fourth quarter, I think we're in the fourth quarter on our own one-yard line, trying to get something done for April. I think we need to do something more definitive now, and, you know, we'll talk about that tonight, and I think that when we do that override, when we put our, you know, our talking pieces together properly, that could go to, you know, a solution, go to, offset a solution, I think we should talk about tonight.
No, I, I mean, you're right, we may be on the one-line, one-yard line, but we're, we've got time for you. Okay, we're going to get it done, so.
And now, I have, I know you keep trying to leave, but now I have one more comment. Something I'm very proud of, although I was not happy with the outcome last fall, something I was very proud of was the level of collaboration between the town and the school side. Before any vote was taken by either board, there was this healthy amount of work between the town manager, the superintendent of schools, the Board of Selectmen, the school committee, a lot of public discussion, and a real, you, I certainly felt, speaking only for myself, that what we were putting out there was a community-supported, you know, it wasn't tilted one way or the other, it represented the same split. I just think that that approach, if we got anything right, we got that right.
Right.
So let's do that again.
No, absolutely, and we've, and, and we're going to continue to do that, and, and that's why, you know, other towns are floundering when they run into these problems, we don't, we figure it out.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, Mrs. Webb.
I just, I would just like to say that I think if there's, if there are Tom Bradys on our team, there are Dr. Doherty and his administrative team, and our town manager, and our police chief, and our fire chief, those are the Tom Bradys, and frankly, I think we have been not the offense and defense they need. And so, I, I totally appreciate what you, you said, I have the, I have the privy of having looked at Mr. Robinson's idea, what he's going to propose, it's going to be a good conversation. I just want to say, though, when, in line with Mr. Robinson's idea about, we may need to take some measure now, and look at an override at a longer ti, a slightly extended time period, we need to look at the lessons of the past. And when we passed the last override, we had every committee member on both boards, we had the police chief, the fire pre-chief, the superintendent, everyone, the town accountant, the town treasurer, was on that videotape that Kent Tucci put together, and was saying, "We need to do this." And until this town, until this town, until all of our municipal leaders and our school leaders can be doing that together, an override won't pass. So, we, we need to do all of what you said, Barry, but we need to do, I believe, all of what I was just describing, because that's the recipe that's been successful in the past.
Thank you, and I, I am going to, I, you, you've announced quite a big thing, and we do have a budget that we need to get into.
Vote on.
And it sounds like there will be further discussion about override in the future, so I just don't want the school committee now delving into opinions of...
No, and I didn't need to, but I just, I just wanted to put that out there.
No, 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 public comment, say what you want. So, so certainly, I, I just want to rein us back in on the budget, but did you have something, Dr. Doxer?
I do. I really appreciate you coming, Barry, and sticking your neck out, and making a commitment, I know you're trying.
You're never leaving.
Sorry?
He keeps trying to leave the room. I said, "You're never leaving."
And I appreciate the other selectmen that have come to our meetings as well. I just want to underscore, and, and I want to thank the gentlemen for your presentation, and, and reiterate what our chair said about, we are listening, our hearts are breaking at the same time as we go through this process. We are listening, and the, the decision in front of us, it's just an unbelievable decision that we have to make, but I am hopeful, like you expressed, that together we can work on it. But I think that in order to do that, we have to confront some things that aren't necessarily said, but they come through tone, and they come through questions. We need to get together in terms of appreciating and trusting the experts that have been doing the work along with us, and I underscore the "along with us" because I know I've been meeting with the superintendent on my own since I started on the school committee, but that's been while I've been going through this budget as well, and I have been voicing questions, and getting answers, and watching how I was listened to through the whole process. And so, we might be on the one-yard line, but we got here because of the, the Herculean efforts of our experts, of our educators, and of the work that we've been trying to do together. And so, I don't, so, I think that it's really important, from the town standpoint and the school ki, school committee standpoint, that we continue that working together, and that we trust each other in our realms of expertise. So when we make whatever decision we have to make today, and I know you said, "Look a little harder, look a little deeper, turn over every rock," we've been turning over rocks, and we've been listening to very impassioned, wise people. And so, when we get to that point where we have to vote, and we make a decision, then that's the point when these rocks have been turned over, and now we have to go forward. And the different boards have to collaborate and come together to move on what we've decided, and to ameliorate it with an override, that's my opinion, like you said. But we need to trust the expertise of the people that have to make the decisions as well. And I think that we set an example for our kids and each other, not just from the words we speak, but the tone we use. And when the tone is undermining, but the words are positive, kids hear everything, kids feel what's going on in school. I feel, and they feel it at home, too, and I think that's our responsibility to model the education that our goal is. Our goal is not to educate kids just for career or for college, it's for life. And these kids are going to go out there and fight these battles for the rest of their lives, because nothing's easy, nothing's spoon-fed, the money isn't just put on our plates. And so I think that we need to work together and trust each other, and open our filters so we can see other perspectives, and where compromises come from. And I, I guess I'm being a little impassioned, but I feel like when we move on to our next steps, it's not just in words, it's in actions, and in tone, and in open filters, because we need to work together, or this isn't going to work. And our town, and our kids, and our families are going to suffer. Thanks.
Thanks, Dr. Doxer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berman.
Thank you.
I'll ask at this point if there is any other public comment, either not on the budget, or if there is someone who really is under time constraint and needs to address the committee now.
I'm not, I'm not under time constraints, it's not.
Then, yes, thank you, Mrs. Downing.
Thank you, Mary Ann Downing, 13 Heather Drive. So this is just a, a complete confusion, follow-up to a question I asked last, Dr. Doherty corrected something I asked last night about the science program implementation, and this is over the past couple of years, because I had in my mind that we had prior money to fiscal year seven, 17, and back in the town meeting last spring, Article Five, we voted to add 150,000 first-year funding for new K-12 science curriculum, 150,000, and we voted to add that to the town operating budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2015. So as I understand that, that's the fiscal year 16 budget?
Yep.
That's 150K there.
Yep.
Then I looked at the fiscal year 17 budget, which is the current year, and there is 150 in that as well?
In the school budget.
In the school budget? It says in the introductory section...
I think we revoked the budget. Gelsee.
We, the, the money was in FY 16, it wasn't FY 17. The money was appropriated in FY 16, we purchased all of the door, the roads in FY 16.
Right.
That's the only funding we received.
So in FY 17, in the, in the introductory message, it says, "This budget is 150 over the guidance lending."
Yeah, 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 yeah. Mrs. Downing, we revoked the budget after town...
Mrs. Perry is here to finance committee.
Oh, okay.
I do remember that, that was a proposal in front of FinCom, instead to put it in the present year's budget, and this way it got, you know, all the...
Okay, so, so it did, it did get shifted.
It did.
All right, so that was just the, the first part of, of my question.
Mrs. Downing, if I could just, because I'm not sure you, you were picked up on a mic. So we voted last year, and said we would like 150,000 for the first year from FinCom, from free cash, and then went to town meeting, and there were funds that could have been, to not go to free cash, there was funds that could have been used, and the administration said, "Yeah, if we buy them now, we can use them next year."
Right, that's what I remember.
So that was the solution. And then we, as a school committee, revoked the budget after that at 150 lower. So that's why you're seeing an old, an older version of the budget.
So it looks like, okay, I, I just, I got it off the, the, okay, I had, I had saved...
I wonder if we didn't adjust and republish it? We probably, we probably didn't adjust and republish.
Okay, I know, that, so that's maybe why I was, that's why I was thinking we had already paid it. So my other question, though, in thinking, "Okay, we're only, we're using 150 in fiscal year 17 for three grades," so I'm just curious, with this program, and this is the only time I'm going to touch into the future budget, as we think about, "Okay, how much do we need for this?" What is going to be the ongoing consumables cost for the Noah Adam program for five or six grades? Because 150, I know some of that is grade six this year, there isn't really material, a lot of materials, I keep, my kid's in grade six, and he keeps bringing stuff from home, but there's only three elementary grades that we're getting for 150K, that also includes some training, I don't know how much. There, there wasn't that much money in, is, is the money going to the building budgets? Because I looked in the fiscal year 17 budget, and it was only like 46,000 for science, and so, where did the rest of the hun, how does the rest of the 150 this year go? And what is going to be our ongoing cost once we buy the curriculum for Noah Adam? Because I'm, I'm just, feels like a high consumable cost to me.
It is. Dr. Doherty?
I'll answer part one, and Mr. Martin will answer part two.
Okay. Sounds good.
So for FY 18, it is in the building budgets for the consumables?
Just for the, the grades that we already...
Grade three, four, five.
Right, no new grades, I get that.
Correct. So that's, that is in place, and the goal is to continue to...
So that's why the consumable, that's why science is up 104%. So that's why the consumable, that's why science is up a hundred and four percent.
Exactly.
Okay.
And I'll let Mr. Martin talk about future direction, if you'd like, with K to two.
Yeah, so-
Just, just quickly, 'cause I know you have a lot to do.
Yeah, so, grade six, we did, uh, begin a new, new materials, new program. It's not the Noah Adam program.
Right, it's iScience, yeah.
It's a different program. Uh, I mean, I just wanna make sure we clarified that, that what we're doing in the elementary level, um, that the, the costs associated really also has to do with the instructional approach of, of having consumables that need to be renewed, having the hands-on types of experiences and things, and really putting a focus on that. Um, I don't have the numbers exactly. I think Gail was looking at what that, we could get that at a future time. But we were, we were felt confident that in those three gr- grades, that that could be sustained regardless of what happens in, in the future. We knew going in that we were gonna be potentially facing tougher times. So we were already having discussions with not only grade six, but grade seven and eight. We've begun some preliminary discussions with K two. We assumed that we would probably not be able to extend the Noah Adam program, for instance, into the lower grades. We picked grades three, four, five, and six to begin because we felt those were the higher leverage grades to make sure the kids had the, uh, firm foundation. Um, also, to be honest, that, you know, with our state assessment scores, there was some proven need in that area to get things changed and aligned much more quickly, and so we focused on those grades. We're still figuring out what we're doing for K one, two. Um, we don't anticipate a packaged sort of program. We're still figuring out.
Okay, so it's not like, okay, if you wanted those, that's another fifty K, so now it's a hundred K consumable cost a year for this program? Okay. That was really what I was getting at, once I got past the, where the hundred and fifty went. Thank you. I knew, I knew there was an answer, but I remembered being at town meeting and voting enthusiastically for it, so, thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Mrs. Downing. Any other public comments? Not on the budget. Yeah, Ms. Callobachi.
Hi, Erin Callobachi, four nine four Main Street. I actually wanna talk about something that's positive. Last week, I did participate in the real-world problem solving at the high school, and I had chosen to co-chair, so I will chair it next year. And I cannot speak highly enough about this type of project for the school. This was the first year, from my understanding, and Dr. Doherty, you could maybe correct me, this was the first year that it was parents who collaborated on the case studies.
That's correct.
So with that, that brought more parental involvement, and parents that are actually involved, working, and were able to bring what we consider to be more accurate problems for the students. And what this did for the students, because it focused on the areas that they would be most interested in studying in college, they had an opportunity to really put what they think they would be interested in, in studying further down the road to work. The big thing that I saw about it, though, is the judges that were also able to come in. These are the types of programs that our school system has to adopt because we had more collaboration from the community. We had someone from Amazon Robotics. What that says to me is, this is someone that sees firsthand what is going on, and then we can go back to those businesses and ask for support. Support in dollars, support in more volunteerism from them, more collaboration. These are the types of outside-of-the-box thinking that we have to focus on, especially if we really want to prepare our students to the best of their abilities. It's what I, it, it was tremendous. I'm looking forward to next year. But I really cannot stress enough, more programs like this have to be instituted so we can have more buy-in from the communities and especially the community businesses. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming tonight and sharing that. Um, I had lunch today. I, I went to an RCTV event, and I'd lunch, I met a new woman from the community I never met before, and we spent about twenty minutes dissecting the dire fiscal situation that the schools are facing. Um, and then she asked me about serving on the school committee, and I started talking about the things I've seen happening in our schools. And I, and I found myself going, we've been talking about the budget so much that maybe it is, is very nice to talk about the amazing things I've seen in the classroom, and I think you, it just was very nice for you to come in and share that because that is an amazing program, and there's a lot of them going on. So thanks. Mrs. Ross?
I just wanna, um, add to that, that I know Mrs. Doxer and I have both been, uh, participated in that program because parents and community members have always been involved in the judging aspect of it, so this is a great addition. But I know we both had very, um, positive experiences, and that the teachers who support those programs do a tremendous amount of collaboration, and, um, many of them are teachers that have, you know, taken the, expanding the boundaries class, um, that Dr. Doherty has taught over the years, and they apply many, you know, all, all of that, um, sort of best-in-class. And it's been a pleasure to be part of that process in the past. So it's great that we continue to, um, enhance it and have parents in, in even a more significant way.
Thank you. Any other public comment not on the FY eighteen budget?
Can I just say?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
But, actually, I'm not sorry. I just wanted to add to that, that the, um, problem solving, the everyday problem solving was once a pilot, and once a pilot that there were a lot of questions and issues around, whether it was when middle, midterms would happen, which grade it would be, what the questions were gonna be, who was gonna work on it, what the follow-through would be. There have been lots of questions, and through the teachers working together, I know they spent time on it during the summer, as well as working with the administration, they have evolved this wonderful, life-changing program. And so I just wanted to make the point that change is really hard. But that working together, we can make change work.
Thanks. Um, any other public comment? Okay, uh, want to do consent agenda?
Is there anything anybody would like removed from the consent agenda? All those in favor of the presented. Consent agenda as presented.
Six zero. Thank you. Um, I do wanna do a report. Alex, start with you.
Very good. Um, the drama club is putting on a production of The Twelve Dancing Princesses on February third, fourth, and fifth, and they would really like your support.
That's great.
I think you actually have an envelope.
We do, from the parents supporting student theater.
Yeah.
Uh, any committee reports tonight? I actually, I have one. Um, today, uh, I was invited to attend, um, the first, I think it was the first, in what will be a series of many months-long of work with RCTV. It was incredibly well-attended. There were two selectmen there, at least, that I saw. Um, it was an enormously, I can't even think of how much of a cross-section of the community it was. Um, and what is precipitating it, just for the committee's information, is that, uh, Reading has a franchise, a license, a contract, if you will, with both Comcast and Verizon. They're ten-year contracts, and one with Comcast is about to expire next year in two thousand and eighteen. So RCTV has reached out to a consultant to help the community manage the process. Um, and then there'll be several, um, focus groups and, and other events to learn about this and to have input. Um, but there will be a, a lot of outreach to the community to ask what you're getting out of RCTV, our community access television, and what might be different in the future and what would be helpful. So I just encourage everyone to be thinking about that over the next few months. There will be an online survey coming this summer, so it's an easy way for anyone in the community to give their input. Um, it is a ten-year contract typically, um, so it's, it, it will be for a very long time. So it's worth the time now as a community to think through what we want. Um, so, yeah, Mr. Wavon?
I had a thank you from an author who spoke at an event I attended earlier this week. Um, the LiveWires put on an event at the, uh, Reading Public Library. Uh, the author, it was Tara Sullivan-Wavon, and it's no coincidence that the last name is the same. That's my wife. Uh, and she wanted to thank the sixty-two Reading students who showed up for that event to raise awareness about a real-world problem that children in other places face. Um, she wrote a book, and she talked about her book, and then the LiveWires presented a documentary. Her book is a, a fiction book about two children in a real-world situation, written for middle-grade, uh, readers. So if you wanna know more, please come find me afterwards. Thank you.
That's great. Yeah, this is about-
We had the RACASA, uh, meeting this evening, and, um, I know not everyone was there as we have this meeting. Uh, but I just wanted to, uh, number one, publicly, um, thank Erica McNamara, who made a great presentation at the, uh, Board of Selectmen, I think, a week ago. And she's made, um, excellent presentations to us, and the, we went over some data, and our school resource officer was there, Mike Malulo. The data on, um, how we've been able to leverage the, um, it, the new service, um, the Williams-
Interface.
Interface, and, um, be able to connect people who need mental health support, have anxiety, drug issues, and be able to connect them with providers, that I believe, like, eighty percent of the connections were through the school. So it's a fabulous resource. A lot of, uh, local communities are part of that. And I also just wanted to emphasize that, um, that on February sixth, is that next Monday? No, uh, two weeks from now. So this is, the, the Reading Coalition of Substance Abuse wanted to really, um, highlight, and of course it's important to the schools, that the Board of, how there'll be a public hearing with the Board of Health on, um, tobacco regulations, and really starting to address issues with regard to vaping and, um, the candy that's really nicotine behind the counters, and how that's, um, you know, Joe Camel all over again. So if what I just said doesn't sound familiar to you, then, um, I would ask people to take a look at the RACASA website and also go on the municipal or the town website and take a look at what's going on with the Board of Health. And, uh, and it's something that I think we need to be involved with. And, um, in line with what Mrs. Doxer said about change, when our youth crew, the RACASA youth crew, put forward elimination of cigarettes, um, being sold in the pharmacies in, in town, there was a significant pushback, and people were afraid this would, this would damage our town, it would damage economic development, and we would be an outlier. And within a year, CVS rolled it out nationally. It was throughout the state, and it's been a model. So it's, um, it may feel like we might be making, looking to make some changes that might feel uncomfortable again, but I really wanted to remind the community that when you look at how those changes are focused on our youth, the kids who spoke today, all of the youth, what's the best thing for them? And you look at the gains, the data tells us, the gains that we've made in tobacco and alcohol usage, it's because we're doing the right things. So it really, I know everybody doesn't have enough on their plates. They got one more thing. So you can go to like three meetings on that Monday night if you like.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other committee reports? Administration?
I have no report.
I know, we've seen you, like, every night this week.
I just have a quick reminder, the, um, the special ed parent advisory council is meeting next Tuesday, the thirty-first, at seven fifteen in the superintendent's conference room. It is a business meeting, and all are welcome to attend.
That's great. Um, I don't exactly know if this is, I'm torn on whether to do this during reports or budget, but I think I'm gonna throw it out there during reports. In the last twenty-four hours, I've received, uh, one email and two phone calls, um, but I, they have not gone to the entire committee, and in, in all of the correspondence, I said, "I will report this out tonight for their information." Um, they were all people advocating for certain components of the budget. Um, through all three, wanted to, um, stress the importance of the science curriculum and wanted to advocate for year two of implementation. Uh, one of them wanted, um, wanted to advocate for increased full-day K tuition to cover the cost of paraprofessionals, to avoid that cut. Um, one of them stated, "If we go, in the future, if we go down the direction of an override, um, her priority would be that we restore positions." So she wanted to articulate that. And she also said that she would love to see a, um, a resource officer for the middle schools. If, if we were ever, as a community, to be able to afford it, she felt that would be a very worthy investment. So I wanted to, I promised them I would, and now I have. Dr. Doherty, I believe, um, to kick off our discussion, you have some slides to share?
Yes, and, and a lot of this is questions that have come up from committee members either si- at the last meeting or since the last meeting, and I will be brief 'cause I know that we wanna get into the conversation. Um, I just wanna start off again by saying that, um, this has been, I said a little bit of it last night. This has certainly been a very long budget process. I mean, we really could think about it, been working on FY eighteen since June. Um, we've just barely finished FY seventeen. And there's an enormous amount of gratitude goes out to, um, the committee. I know you've put in an awful lot of work into this because I've seen it firsthand, so I, I appreciate it. You have, we have had a lot of conversations, um, about this budget, um, you know, and the questions have been excellent. Um, and they are public. Everything's on the, the website, so please, you know, for the community, take a look at it. Um, there's been a lot of thoughtful questions about this budget, and I appreciate that. I also wanna thank my team, my central office team and my administrative team. There's, uh, prin- several principals here tonight and, and other administrators, um, for their work on this. This has been a very mentally draining process, process since the override did not pass. Um, and we have had a lot of conversations about what we felt was gonna have the least impact on kids. And I know the cuts that have been presented don't seem that way, but we have reviewed and exhausted a lot of different options. And to speak to, um, something that Mr. Berman said, um, earlier, and to something I think that you had just, that a community member said, you have my word as superintendent, that, um, if there's any funding that becomes available for what, for whatever means, whether it be an override or, or a windfall of state aid, or who knows what it is, that, um, that we will work diligently, our administrative team will work diligently, um, to focus on the classroom in putting the positions back that we, um, you know, that we unfortunately have had to reduce. So I just, I want the community to know that, I want the school committee to know that, that our priority is the classroom, and has always been the classroom, um, in every budget that I've presented to the committee. Uh, having said that, um, I wanna go back in time just for a minute, and, um, this was a slide, unedited, that we presented to you on September twenty-sixth, just prior to the override. And we talked about, this was at a time when we didn't think we were gonna have, if, if, if there was no, uh, free cash was added to the budget, no free cash was added, it was going to be about a two-million-dollar reduction. Um, and we did say at the time, if there was a two-million-dollar cut to the budget, there would be thirty to thirty-five positions, FTE personnel. And then I went further, and I showed where those cuts probably would be and the impact of those cuts. So this was the September twenty-sixth slide. Um, we talked about classroom teachers at the elementary, the support staff at the elementary, um, classroom teachers at the middle school, and classroom teachers at the high school, and we gave the impact. We didn't get into specifics, but it did talk about increasing class sizes, elimination of program, less support for teachers. All of these things were brought up at the time, um, prior to the override. And then we went into the scope also. There was also other reductions, and we talked about what possibly could happen in the non-personnel pieces. So this was something that unfortunately, um, had, you know, we're at a point now where that is, is, it's come to fruition, it's a little bit less because, um, there was a million dollars of free cash that was, uh, infused into the budget. I do wanna talk about a couple of other things that came up in the last conversation, just further to support the data. Um, we had a lot of conversation about instructional leadership and how we are, um, we, we don't have the instructional leadership that other school districts do. So this is, uh, DESI category. There is a DESI category called Curriculum Directors, Department Heads, and School Leadership. This is what would be classified as instructional leadership. According to DESI on the right is who would be in that category. Um, and in some school districts, they do exist, and some school districts, they do not. And you can see where Reading lies, twenty-sixth, um, in expenditure out of our thirty comparable communities. Um, so this is an area that, that has been a concern. I showed you this slide a year ago when we were having conversations about, um, the override and types of things that, uh, we, we felt we needed. Um, but again, you know, again, it supports some of the things that we've been, we've been talking about. I also want to go one step further, and this is a conversation I started the last time about, um, administrators in our school district and the amount of, uh, evaluation and supervision that they have. And you could see that, and I actually made an error. I was going off the top of my head, but the numbers were higher. The numbers are higher than I had said the other night, um, in terms of staff per administrator. You can see that, the elementary, because there's only one administrator in each building, um, they have a much higher, uh- um, they have a much higher, um, evaluation load. Um, our middle schools are s- are at in thirties and forties, um, at thirties, and then our high school is at thirty-seven. So you could see across the board, the, the number of staff that our administrators are supervising and evaluating, on top of the day-to-day operations of, of the school. And, um, it's a, it's a pretty tight, um, level. There were some other questions that came up the last time, the last increase for full day kindergarten tuition was the two thousand ten-eleven school year, uh, that was when it was increased to forty-two hundred dollars. And then I believe there was a question about the years that classes reached twenty-six or above at the elementary level, and there's a list of all of the times that that happened. Um, in the nineties, it actually reached twenty-nine a couple times, we did some research on it. So there, there were, there were instances where class sizes were pretty high at the elementary. Um, most of it was before we had five elementary schools, you can see, I think there was only a couple of times that that was the case, um, after the, uh, the fifth elementary school was built. So that, I know that was brought up last time. I also had a question there about the school calendar, and I, I, I did say something the last meeting about school calendar, and I just wanna clarify. So, um, you'll notice on the calendar that you approve every year, that there are five snow days built in. Well, that's actually a requirement of Massachusetts general law, um, in the student learning time regulations. So you see that purposely, because the five days are supposed to be snow days. Um, the theory being that we're never gonna have more than five snow days, although that hasn't always been the case, there've been several years where that hasn't happened, and we've had to go beyond that. But we are required to schedule a school year that includes at least a hundred and eighty-five days, um, and required to operate schools for at least a hundred and eighty days. So that's, that's under Massachusetts general law. This is separate than the discussion that's been happening with collective bargaining. So I just wanna make that clear, that this is totally different. Um, we not only have a day requirement, we also have a time requirement, um, which is also here. Elementary have to go a minimum of nine hundred hours, um, and it, it's pretty specific what's considered instructional time versus what isn't. And, uh, middle and high school have to go nine ninety. And then, uh, half-day kindergarten is a minimum of four twenty-five. So I just wanted to clarify that from last time, um, that this is under the DESI regulations, that we have to abide by. And right now, the way we're going, we may be able to cut back on some of those days, right? Not gonna work?
That's always a recipe for us nosy.
It gets snowed during February vacation all the way.
Oh, once, yeah.
Um, I also wanna go back to a meeting we had on November seventh, Guiding Principles. Um, I remember you gave me guidance on how to develop the budget, and then at the bottom, I know someone said this is gonna be difficult, good luck. So, uh, I wanted to make sure I captured that. But here are some of the things that you, as a committee, had, had expressed, minimizing the impact on juniors and seniors, focus should be on the core programs, retain structures that will best promote social, emotional, um, maintaining frameworks and positions within our schools that support students, uh, maintaining programs art, music, drama, course choices, no increases in fees in our sets, unfortunately, that one didn't get accomplished. Um, budget needs to be sustainable, no gimmicks, and several of you said that. Um, preserve classroom teachers, everything's on the table, keep class sizes K to three, especially low, um, beware of state and federal mandates, and focus on academic achievement. So, I'm not saying we, we're able to check them all up, um, but I just wanted to go back, this was the original guiding principles that you gave us at the November seventh meeting, as we were starting to develop the budget. And then I did have a question, um, a, uh, about, about this, the salaries versus expenses. I did show this, uh, from last year, when, during the summer, and I just, again, wanted to show you how our budget is broken down, and how difficult it is just to cut expenses versus salaries. Um, so you could see, thanks to Gail, she put all this together, this beautiful chart. The budget summary, you could see that the total budget, forty-one million three oh one six sixty-one, that the total salaries makes up eighty-three percent of our budget. Only seventeen percent of our budget is expenses. The town budget is much different. I, I believe the town manager told me last night it's fifty-fifty between expenses and salaries. Um, so it really puts us in a difficult position. We are also, and this is a little bit different also with the town budget, representative versus non-representative is a much different ratio. Um, so we have a lot more of the collective bargaining agreements that, um, that, that play a role in this. When you take a look at the expense piece, which is this bottom chart, um, that's six million nine sixty-three four forty-seven, um, a lot of it's mandated. The, particularly special education, you see is four million five ninety-eight four nineteen. That, that's required, um, by law. Um, and then when you take a look at the other expenses by cost center, you see some of the things that make up the number. You know, you've got legal fees, and audit, and employee physicals, those are things that are required. Um, we have to, we have to do those things. Um, photocopier leases, leasing, there's some licensing we have to do. Um, regular day, you've got the building-based budgets, all of the supplies and materials, um, mandated transportation, uh, technology. Uh, district-wide is, um, health is really your medical supplies, extracurricular, um, that's transportation, athletics is transportation and rentals, and, uh, district-wide technologies, your servers and other infrastructure. And then in facilities, it's the contracted cleaning services and supplies. So you could see that there aren't a lot of expenses that we can cut without it having some sort of impact, either legally, or it's gonna have an effect in another way. So it, it does, it does put us in a difficult position as, as we're trying to cut one point four million dollars from the budget. So I just, I wanted to point that out, uh, I know we've talked about it before, but I wanted to capture it so, you know, people could see the magnitude of, of what we were trying to accomplish with this budget that we were presenting to you. So.
Can you go back to the previous slide?
Yes.
I think this is one of the most helpful slides we've seen. And if we saw it before, we saw it over the summer as we approached the override. Um, but I, um, I agree with you, Ms. Dowd, it is a beautiful, um, it's very helpful to articulate the, the challenge that we're facing. Um, thank you for that, Dr. Doherty, that was helpful to frame the discussion. As we discussed at our last meeting, um, oh, sorry. Did that help? I don't know either. How's that? It's going to be really hard to hand it down the road, I can, I'm happy to use it, but. Oh, okay, well, we'll see. Um, as we discussed at the last meeting, um, the approach that I'd like to take to keep the discussion focused and productive is to talk about, um, potential cuts, and then talk about, let's put in quotes, "putbacks." Um, so starting with this recommended budget, and, um, I should make some, some remarks along the lines of what Dr. Doherty said. I think the staff's, uh, attention and work on this has been beyond, uh, beyond. When the school committee, um, submits fifty-four pages of questions, and you answer them in five days, um, and answer them well, and thoroughly, and with footnotes, so people can find the information, um, we're very grateful for the amount of work and thought that went into this, and not just to the people sitting at this table, but I know the principals were intimately involved in developing this budget, and I can't imagine how hard those conversations were. So, uh, thank you to everyone who was involved. I also wanna say that I, we've done a lot of listening as a school committee, that's been our job for the last several meet- months, listening to the, weeks, I mean, listening to the administrators, listening to the teachers, listening to the parents, listening to the community, um, but I wanna articulate that I don't believe there's anyone at this table who's happy about this situation. Um, so, we are going to deal with it, because that's our job, uh, and that's what we are elected to do, uh, but that does not mean that, um, we are not, uh, feeling a lot of the anger and frustration and despair that other people are feeling about, uh, the fiscal situation facing the Reading Public Schools. This is a moment, um, we'll dive into it, uh, we'll dive into it, but I know it's been a very, very, very difficult couple of months for the, um, employees of the Reading Public Schools. So to the extent that anybody listening to this has the opportunity to thank a teacher, to thank an administrator, to give a hug, to send the email saying, "Keep up the great work, you did this thing, it was amazing for my kid," um, I think this would be a really good moment for the community to come out and find any way that they can to support our teachers, they definitely need it right now. That being said, when I was looking through the budget, I found myself, I would categorize my approach as macro and micro. I started micro, and I quickly realized that I was finding five thousand dollars maybe here, maybe fifteen thousand dollars here, maybe forty thousand here, not sure it's a good idea, but we should discuss it. Um, they were tiny, and they weren't even a drop in the bucket of one point four million dollars. So then I stepped back and said, "Well, now I need to think macro." And then I understood why, um, the administration came to the conclusion of restructuring things. You can't make cuts of this scope by looking at line items and taking ten percent here and eight percent here, you can't, you have to restructure. Um, so with that, I guess I would like to ask, I, I'd like to split the discussion into the big ideas. Did anyone wanna bring a big, completely alternate way of thinking, before we get into the, "I wanna look at this line item for eight thousand dollars," and, you know what I'm saying?
I have just a call- process.
Yep, yep.
Because, um, I think some of the things that are reflected in some of the slides that are prepared of Mr. Robinson's were the things that I know that I also talked with the superintendent about. So are we gonna go through those?
I would, I would constitute that as a big, a big thing, so yeah.
Okay, so, I just.
Yeah, was gonna, do you not want him to do?
No, I do, I just, is that what we're gonna dive into first, before we start? The other things, we're gonna go over the slides that are prepared for this slide.
Yes, that's what I was about to do.
All right, I didn't know, I, I had no idea, I never saw these before, and I, we, you, you asked us all to provide input.
Yeah.
And we did, and then, I'm sorry, but when I only saw like Mr. Robinson's slides here, which I think are fabulous, um, I just didn't know what happened to the other input other than my, the ideas coming.
I'm glad that you, I'm glad that you said that.
And I, and I, and Mr. Robinson deserves all the credit.
I only just emailed it over and asked if I could have it as a talking point.
Okay.
Mrs. Sorry.
We're prepared to address those.
Yeah, Mrs. Webb, you're right, I should probably, for people who weren't watching our last meeting, I had requested that anyone in the committee who wanted to make alternative proposals to email me and Dr. Doherty, uh, for two purposes. One is if people were requesting expense cuts, as he just showed, that were mandated, I really didn't wanna waste committee time discussing that. I mean, if it's a mandate, we cannot cut it, so let's not have the discussion. Um, so I wanted him to be able to kind of vet that, and for myself to be aware of the discussion. The other thing, um, much more important, is if anyone on the committee wanted to discuss, um, wanted to discuss alternate personnel cuts, I certainly wanted Dr. Doherty to have the opportunity to reach out to the impacted personnel and have a conversation, so that they did not first hear about that discussion on social media, or on television, or through the grapevine. That was just a matter of respect to our employees. So, um, I heard from almost every member of the committee, Mrs. Webb, with various ideas. Uh, but Dr. Doherty knows them all, and has been, and is prepared, so, does that?
Yeah, I just, thank you.
Okay. Um, but Mr. Robinson, I would characterize your, what you wanted to discuss as more holistic, so I do think it's a good place to start.
Great.
Yep.
So, uh, when I put this together, uh, and I did a lot of, a lot of reflection on, nine years on the FinCom before eight years here, probably too long. Uh, I was sixteen when I started. And, uh, you know, and some of the things we've done in the past, and, and, uh, and obviously trying to remain respectful of, you know, the process that got us here, the, the meetings with the FinCom, the FinCom guidance, the discussions with the Board of Selectmen, and, you know, as I said, what I'm proposing are things we've done in the past. I think we're at that point right now, uh, because I just can't see us, uh, trimming around the edges. Uh, I've all, I won't, I've drawn value judgments on, my own value judgments on the things that I'm suggesting, but I won't, I won't go into those, 'cause more importantly, uh, to, to Ms. Borowski's point, uh, you know, I heard the community loud and clear, and that I've talked to teachers and, and some administrators, and, and I'm hearing, the things I'm hearing are, are the things that I think we need to focus on. It's, it's not gonna equal a million four, uh, but I think it's, uh, a, a good step forward, uh, and as I get to the end of it, I'll talk about the override part a little bit, but since Mr. Berman brought it up, uh, maybe I'll start there. Uh, I think that, I think it's certainly something we should do, uh, and, but I really, I am concerned that we won't do a good enough job, uh, if we, uh, try to jam that into April. Uh, what, so what I, uh, would like to propose with, with this is, what, if we go ahead with what I'm proposing, uh, we then earmark, uh, some of an override that could happen in a, in a, say, a year from now, to go right into, uh, whatever was taken out of free cash. We've done that in the past, uh, we did it in two thousand and three, when I was on the FinCom, that was the last override, and we took, uh, eight hundred thousand dollars of that override and put it in a stabilization account, different than free cash, because a stabilization account requires a two-thirds vote at town meeting, and free cash only requires a majority vote at town meeting. So we did that, and I don't believe, to this day, we've ever gone and taken any of that original eight hundred thousand dollars, and that, that actual stabilization count has built itself up to, I think it's about a million. I was going off of the stuff that, that Sharon presented last night, I think we're up close to a million six.
In stabilization?
Yes. Uh, I would, uh, so I guess what, uh, so what I'm proposing is a loan from free cash, and, uh, that, uh, we go out there and get our act together, and do the right job to get an override passed, and I'm not saying it's impossible for April, but I think, as I've heard a lot of people say, uh, we have to do it right, 'cause we can't go back a third time. And I think if we do this, and we make that commitment, and I, and to, uh, to the FinCom, uh, that, you know, it is a loan, and, and the override that we need to sell to the public says that we're gonna repay that debt, uh, back to free cash. Uh, again, it's not a new concept, it's, it's something we've done in the past, uh, and, uh, you know, I, uh, you know, I, I, I think it's, it's a good, uh, it's a way to, to address what I heard loud and clear from, as I said earlier, the community, uh, the, the, the students again tonight, uh, and, and everybody. It's, uh, you know, if the, our reserves are at, are at, uh, you know, healthy levels, and, and I've always taken a very judicious approach in, uh, using, uh, free cash accounts, and I think, uh, we're, we're at that rainy day. So I don't know if you wanna back up to. So the first thing I would propose, uh, we put back is the, the, uh, the middle school classroom teachers. Uh, again, the source of funding for that would be a free cash request. And by the way, a- again, I, I, I say loud and clear, I'm not trying to be disrespectful to the FinCom and, and their leadership, I, I fully appreciate everything they've done, uh, and, and the guidance they've given us, and, but as school committee members, uh, you know, we've heard that, you know, we don't, we consider, our job is to advocate. So the next step is, our job is to go sell this, uh, to the FinCom. And, uh, you know, that's what we would do very respectfully. And again, I remind the committee, that's something we've done in the past. I've sat at the table, uh, with Dr. Doherty, I've sat there with your predecessor, uh, for, for certain, uh, and, you know, if we have a, a solid argu- uh, argument, we can defend it, uh, uh, it's something that they're generally, uh, will listen to. And the, you know, as I point out up there, the rationale, and Mr. Doxer went over, the FinCom goal is to stay at seven percent, uh, by using this amount, uh, we're still, uh, still above that seven percent guidance, which, at eight percent. So if you wanna jump to the next one, then the next one is- So if you want to jump to the next one, then the next one is something that's been bothering me since the first time I saw this budget. Uh, we didn't hear a lot of, a lot of it. I know Ms., Ms. Downing touched on it tonight. Uh, I went on record a year ago or two years ago and said that if we do this, we gotta finish it. Uh, and right now, there's nothing in this budget that says we're finishing it. And that was a commitment that I felt like I was voting for on behalf of the community. So again, I think this is something that needs to be in the budget. Uh, and, uh, going back to the rationale, that additional hundred and fifty thousand dollars uh, still keeps us above our seven and a half, seven percent target. And then, uh, the, this, this is another thing that's been bothering me since the beginning. Uh, you know, obviously our, our, our special ed community is very vulnerable. So, so are our five and six-year-olds and, you know, the way, the world we live in today isn't when I went to kindergarten when you could have one teacher in there and it was, it was, you know, a lot more babysitting than it is today. It's a very difficult and a, a good kindergarten class needs help, a teacher needs help, uh, with when the kids go into their centers and all those sorts of, you just can't do it alone. Uh, you can't be a Lone Ranger and, uh, you know, I think that we've heard, I've gone back and forth on whether we should raise a fee. I also broached the other night, uh, whether we should, uh, take more risk with our, uh, revolving accounts. I think, uh, in light, I, I came to this conclusion in light of, uh, what I had on the previous two slides. It said, you know, we are taking some risks there, maybe here, we gotta, uh, we gotta, uh, pay, pay our own way on this one. And, uh, so, uh, I can't remember exactly, I think it was twenty-five dollar increase or what? Okay, I'm sorry.
So it would go to forty-four?
Right, what did I say, I left the zero off. Uh, so, uh, and we heard from, uh, a lot of parents that, uh, they were amenable to that. Uh, I think we also could make available, uh, scholarships if necessary. So, uh, you know, I think, again, in this society, we can't, we cannot do some, uh, God, and that, that fifty thousand is a, a little bit of money that causes a lot of problems as far as I'm concerned. And then, uh, the other thing that was, uh, Dr. Doherty, uh, mentioned, uh, the, the good news the other night and, and I jumped up, well, you know, we can't, but I've had time now, you know, and I like to, I don't like to make decisions the minute I hear, I had time now to think about it. And it is the right thing to do, uh, to, uh, not try to redeploy that hundred and thirty thousand.
It's a hundred and five.
Hundred and five.
That was my fault that I said hundred and five.
Try to redeploy that somewhere else, it should, it should go back to the, to the elementary teachers. And yeah, and as I said, uh, it's no, trying not, trying to be very respectful. Uh, and again, I, I will be the first one to help, uh, because this is a loan as far as I'm concerned. And, and, uh, but I think that, you know, I'd rather, you know, as I said to Ba- Mr. Berman, I don't want to be on our, my own one-yard line, I want to be on the Falcons' one-yard line. And I think if we have twelve, uh, twelve months, uh, to, to mobilize, I think we have a better shot at, at the override. Thank you, yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
So, um, obviously, this was the, our first opportunity to, um, see Mr. Robinson's suggestions. So I just, I want to, um, make a comment because I've been reviewing to remind myself of what our budget policies are, um, that we hold ourselves accountable to. So I think one of the important things that Mr. Robinson is enabling us to do is that, um, under our budget planning process, the major portion of income for the operation of public schools is derived from local property taxes. We are all well aware of that. We are taxpayers, we have heard from taxpayers for months about the impact of taxes, increases in taxes for our municipal and school services. However, the first priority, oh, sorry, the school committee will attempt to protect the valid interest of the taxpayers. And again, I think Mr. Robinson highlighted that. However, the first priority in the development of an annual budget will be the educational welfare of the children in our schools. And I, I think that, um, you know, we are required, um, to provide a budget that achieves those objectives. And we had said from the get-go that we're not achieving the objectives, we're taking them apart. So I, um, I think it's, I think the other piece of why, again, I, um, certainly want to be respectful of FinCom, absolutely. And I appreciate that Mr. Robinson sort of went through all the history and used his, um, experience on the financial committee prior to being on the school committee. The history of the, of our community passing the overrides basically says that a, April override is extremely risky, um, because of the short amount of time that we have. And I, I think that it's so important, it's been one of my major concerns, that we, we need to do this correctly, um, and we need to do it so that it serves, uh, the needs of the schools and, uh, the municipal services. And, and, you know, given our immediate experience this fall, given our past experience fourteen years ago, I think that a approach, this, this generally, this approach is one that's really resonating with me if it's, uh, something that we can, you know, gain acceptance from through the financial committee.
Can, one other, before, I'm sorry, one other comment, I just, uh, wanted to really emphasize, uh, the second to last bullet, uh, that, that kind of goes with the, the loan. I mean, uh, I'm adamant that, you know, anything that, that proves positive in, in what we do, uh, and I'll leave it at that, uh, will, will immediately in my, I will, this, I mean, we have to, it has to be the committee, but my opinion is it should immediately be used to repay that debt.
Dr. Nine?
Yeah, I'd just like to commend Chuck for, for the work he did. And, um, we've had lots of discussions back and forth. And, um, he's the only person I think on the committee that really has the credibility to bring forward such a, uh, strategy. And, um, I think that, uh, it meets all of our needs. And I know I have a list of things that I would recommend that we would, um, have to delve into, none of which are good, none of which is, as Dr. Doherty has stated clearly, none of his are either. Um, and, um, I think this is a absolute great, uh, suggestion. Um, and I do agree with, uh, Elaine that we probably need to do a, a fall override so that we don't have to put the staff and everybody back through all this. I've been around when we did spring overrides and they're not very comfortable. Again, affects teacher morale, affects effectiveness, uh, teacher effectiveness. And, uh, anyways, that said, um, I think it's an absolute great idea, Chuck, and, uh, I appreciate you bringing it forward.
Yeah, it's, all right. Okay, I'm sorry. Um, anybody else on the, yeah, it'd probably be good if. Um, oh, this feels very awkward. Um, anybody else on the committee want to make a comment on this kind of global approach? Mr. Bobbin?
Chuck, I just have a follow-up question. On repayment of the loan, in the event that the override didn't pass in twelve months, how would you envision, would we negotiate, propose terms of repayment over a fixed period of time? Or how would you approach that?
The override's gonna pass, uh, but, uh, I haven't, we'd have to figure something out in terms of, uh, you know, whether we use less down the road. Uh, but, um, you know, the real, uh, you know, and, and other expense, uh, other expense discussions, you know, leave, we can leave it at that, I don't know what those are at the moment.
Thank you.
And, am I, I have a question about this too. Am I correct then that this would truly be a one-year stopgap measure? Because I think asking the question, if, if an override passes, this works. If an override doesn't pass, are you working under the assumption then that we move forward with the, the significant cuts that we're looking at this year? Maybe not these exact cuts, but, but it's, you wouldn't anticipate, in the event that an override didn't pass, going back to FinCom again and saying, you know, can you, can we do this again?
Yeah, we would need to, to decide whether, uh, it, and this may help with some of your questions, whether it stays in the base. Because if, if it's, uh, free cash, it will go in the base, which gets, uh, goes up by, uh, whatever the budget does. So the question, we would have to decide whether it stays in the base or it comes out of the base and we start, start back from scratch again.
Can I just clarify, so would that, that would mean that whatever the, if the override fails, then that, if, if an override were to happen and it failed, we would be in a position of cutting the budget and sort of also taking that value of free cash to put back to free cash potentially? So it would, it would mean that it's really a one-year loan and the cuts would be more dramatic than they are today, for sure.
Mr. Robinson, thank you for putting this down on paper. Um, I'm fully in support of the, um, the kindergarten approach and, um, I can pray that the town will be responsi- responsive to the, um, loan idea. I think that's a great, very creative idea. Um, my concern, I, my concern is, I also have worked on many overrides, both here and in Wakefield. And one of the mantras that comes out is, well, you found the money before, you'll find it again. And my concern is, right now, people really know, I think, what we've been going through to try to minimize the damage, minimize dismantling our school system because of the money that we don't have. And if we find this money, and that's just gonna be the perception, the general perception, because people already perceive free cash as free cash. So if we put this off till the fall, we find the money, people don't feel the cuts, I'm really afraid that people are gonna say, well, you did it that time, you can do it again. So I'm sort of feeling like, we have motivated people, we have a structure that was just used in the fall. Um, I'm afraid to put this override off, I think we need it. Um, and I think with the promise that we'd be putting back the money that we're using to not dismantle our system, I think that there will be, will be more people on board, um, from across the generations and across the town, um, with kids in school, without kids in school. So.
Yes, go ahead.
So, uh, one of the, uh, in, in all the discussions about, uh, in the debriefing and, and about why the override didn't pass, and one thing I haven't heard anybody say, and I'm sure it may have been part of it, was, and anybody that's been paying attention and looking at this, this town's reserves would vote no on an override. Because we have, uh, free cash to use, would, that's what it's there for, to, for when you have toughs. I mean, the last time, we, when we did the override, and Bob's not here, but he could, could, uh, probably verify, when we did the override in two thousand and three, our free cash was, I think, less than a half a million dollars. Ha, le- reserves, not, not, excuse me, not free cash, everything. Less than a half a million dollars. Very different scenario when this override went on the ballot in, so, and that was always in the back of my mind. I don't know whether, but that's why people voted no, but anyone that was paying attention, that could have been very, been, could have been one of their reasons.
I just, I just want to say one quick comment that, um, Ms. Doxter referenced sort of a sys- um, a group or a system that's in place, that if you were referring to the ballot question group, that, that was a political ballot que- question group, and they disbanded because they were specifically formed for the ballot question. So just, I don't think we should, we, we should speak for those community resources. Um, I, I have a question though about this process because I was actually hoping we'd get to this discussion and vote on the budget tonight. Um, and this would, this basically is a question that we can't answer tonight because we don't know the mind of FinCom or the vote, this would probably require a vote of FinCom. So it, and FinCom is not gonna meet between now and Monday, so I'm not sure how we answer that. Okay.
So, uh, again, historically, what we've done is given a FinCom, or given the, excuse me, the town manager a budget that was out of balance with what, what the,
Oh, okay.
What the, uh, guidance was. And his job as the town manager will probably be to take that out. And then it will be our job to go to the FinCom and defend putting it back in.
Can I, can I?
Dr. Nine's been waiting and really, really, really waiting.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks. Um, question, Chuck, the stabilization fund, that's part of the, um, the current free cash though, right?
Well, it's a separate, there's a free cash account and the stable is, it's part of our certified reserves, really.
So, I guess, I still am a little confused. So is it, when we count the free cash, whatever we said it was, uh, was it eight, six thirty?
It's not.
All right, six, six, uh, six thirty-eight.
No.
Well, no, so when, when we, when, when they use that, that guidance number, it's ba- it's, it's not seven percent free, it's not seven per- free cash seven percent, it's reserves seven percent. Reserves are made up of free cash, stabilization fund.
So it's a separate account.
Sale of real estate fund. Revolving funds, FinCom reserve fund.
So it's a separate account? So when they give us the amount for free cash, the stabilization fund is not in there?
No, it's in the, I have that.
It's part of a free cash calculation.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Well, I, the reserve calculation.
Oh, now you're confusing again.
If you just ask for free cash though, you're not getting the whole picture. I think that's what you're trying to understand, right? If somebody's just telling you this is what we have in free cash, that's not all of the reserves.
Okay.
Yes.
But it, it's, 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 it's liquid, but except to the extent it requires a two-thirds vote a town meeting to get to, as opposed to free cash, which just requires a majority vote.
Okay, I get it now. Um, the other thing I want to say, I, I really support Chuck's strategy of, um, you know, a longer delay for the override, for the, the reason that was actually brought up last night. Um, I, I don't think, you know, we've all guessed as to why the override didn't pass, um, but I think we need to do more research to find out. And I've talked to numerous people about it and I don't necessarily hear a consistent response that why it didn't pass. Um, I think, you know, somehow rather, you know, um, a questionnaire, a poll or something that we can get, Jean and I talked about this, um, after it failed, that we've gotta find out why it didn't pass. We just can't like go back out there and do the same thing over again and expect it to work. So that'll give us time to do that. And I certainly understand, uh, Dr. Dox's point of view that it is, you know, pressing, but I also think that this, this proposal gives us, you know, breathing room to kind of rethink, um, you know, how, how we go about the, uh, the, the override. And then ultim- ultimately, it's, you know, it's back to the Board of Selectment anyways too. We, we just want them to know eventually, and we'd vote on whether or not we agree on it, so. But, um, anyways, that was my, my comment.
Um, just to maybe focus the discussion a little bit, I know that there is. Just to maybe focus the discussion a little bit, I know that there is really no way to tease out this proposal and discussion of a potential override, but I just want to focus on, the focus tonight is passing the FY18 budget. So try to keep that, that, I think tactics about when to have another override and how it will look is more under the Board of Selectmen's purview. And also, to the extent that it's related to this budget, we have to discuss it, but to the extent that it's not, let's focus on the budget. Are you sure?
If you want to speak, I can come back to you.
Okay.
So I, I also just, I really want to highlight our policy again because I think it's so important. And one of the things that it says, it says, because of resource limitations, there's sometimes a temptation to operate so that fiscal concerns overshadow the educational programming. Recognizing this, it's essential that the school system takes specific action to make sure education remains central and that fiscal matters are ancillary to contribute and contribute to the educational program. And this concept will be incorporated into the committee operations and all aspects of the school systems management and operations. And I'm just citing that because again, it's part of our three or four budget policy, budget policies in our policy book, because it really speaks to this struggle and that we're, to take this apart is, it's, we are not doing our duty as a school committee to do really this level of damage to the educational programming. And so now that I fully understand how we would do this process, so Mr. Robinson's proposal here then really is to add the $588,000 to our, the budget that we would potentially vote, and then we would be bringing that to the town manager. So I just want to make sure that I understand. Okay. And it specifically addresses the, I just want to review, specifically addresses the seven middle school classroom teachers at 438,000. The kindergarten paraeducators would be restored, but through the 250 dollar increase in the fee.
Yeah, that's a net, no one.
And then the 150,000 for the science curriculum to continue that. And then that's, that's how we get the total of the 588 is the 438 and the 150.
Right.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure that I was really clear on that.
Just to add to that, the other thing you said in your proposal I feel really strongly about is the two elementary school teachers staying there to lower the class size or keep, keep the class sizes from going up. And that, as we heard from Mrs. McGinnity, is essential to them using the science program in the, in the best way. Because if the class sizes go up, only one teacher just can't do everything. And so in terms of priority, I put the elementary school teachers ahead of the science curriculum. I think that would be wonderful to have it. But if I had to make a choice, and I guess I am making a choice, I hope that the finance committee will approve that extra money, but it's more important to me to have those science, those teachers empowered in the classroom with not larger sizes.
My point on the, the two middle school teachers was that that's no, I mean, elementary school teachers, that's no longer on the, it was taken off of Dr. Doherty's reduction list. And it, when he did that, we could have said, well, leave those cuts there. I want you to redeploy that money to something else. What I'm saying is leave it, leave it where it was. I agree with him. So it's really, that's more a statement in this proposal than, than it's not impacting, the only real impact is the 588 dollars, eighty, eighty-eight thousand.
I just wanted to reaffirm what you were saying, that that's really a priority for me. And it is a choice that we have when we're unpackaging everything. So I'm, would like the two teachers to stay.
I want to thank Chuck for his creative thinking and very much out of the box approach to this. I want to point out a couple of things that haven't been sent yet. So the amount of money we're talking about here, it'll be 638,000 dollars. It's about 1.6% of 40 million.
Five eighty-eight.
Four thirty-eight plus 200?
It's five eighty-eight.
Fifty's a, is a lot.
That's a fee.
Fifty's a fee.
I'm sorry, so it's five, five eighty-eight. I would look at two things very closely. One is the fact that we're asking for someone else's money for this, right? So this is not school committee money. And I would look at, it's not our decision to make, as everybody has already stated. What is the purpose of the funds that we're going to be borrowing? And what is the nature of the use of those funds? So just make sure we're clear on those two things and the choices that we'd be making. To me, the first item on Chuck's proposal, the middle school classroom teacher restructuring the seven FTE, is, represents the undoing of a pretty, in my mind, significant and potentially permanent, permanent at least for the students who would go to school that year, restructuring of their day. They would lose a class period, they would lose access in the seventh grade to, to foreign language. This is a definite and permanent harm in my mind, and I think we should avoid it. And I think it would be difficult, as Jean pointed out earlier, to find other pieces of this budget that we can cut without destabilizing what is left of our school system to achieve a 438,000 dollar reduction. I wasn't able to do it when I went through this with hammer and tongs. And I would suggest and get behind that this idea of asking for a loan for 438,000 would be something I would support because of the nature of the cut. I would want to look very carefully if, if our cost structure continues to rise at three percent per year, which is what we've seen, three to five percent increases, at how we would repay this loan in event we didn't have an override. Because I think that's a reasonable question to ask of someone that is paying the taxes, or of someone who's loaning you the money, in either case. So I want to make sure we're aligned on that. These other two cuts, while mitigating them would be very valuable, I would like to hear the other ideas of the committee, the 150K and the, and the 50,000 dollars. Not because the objectives are not extremely important, but because I'm curious whether the committee was able to find other approaches to removing these detrimental harms to our students. So are there other places we could find 150K? Are there other places we could find 50K for the, for the kindergarten groups? So, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess to, not to throw a wrench into all this, but I'm just wondering too, what, what happens if this isn't approved by FinCom? Where do we go then? Do we go back to the drawing board and say, we're going to just maintain the cuts that we're talking about now? Or do we have another discussion, bringing out some different ideas that some of us have come up with? I mean, personally, I'm, I'm, I'm hopeful that this FinCom will approve it. And it's a very sound approach, so, but I do think we need to be prepared, you know, what's going to happen? What are we going to do if in fact, you know, it, it doesn't fly?
Yeah. We could, I think, either or, or both. That will be up to the chair to decide how she wanted us to proceed, but we could either revert back to where we, where we are, or we can reconvene. That's really up to the, to the chair to decide how to move on with that.
And on that question, I would certainly take input from the committee on how to approach that. I think it's a good question. But I'm, Mr. Boavon said something that I have been thinking. I don't want to muddy the waters too much, but I approached the budget, I think, similarly to how you did. I've read it three times, straight through. The, you should look at the amount of notes and highlighting and questions. I couldn't come close to 400,000 dollars. I couldn't come close to 100,000 dollars. Not without, destabilizing is an excellent word. Not without destabilizing the system in a way that would cause a whole other different kind of harm. And I think what, so I agree with that. So part to answer that question is, if we wanted to come back, I think we would have to some assurance that someone on the committee, this comes back to the thought, do we have a better approach? Do we have a better way to cut 400,000 dollars? I think, I'm hearing consensus around the thought, the thought that this is an unacceptable cut. And in thinking that through, the reason, I'm so glad you attacked the middle school problem, those cuts, if we were to make those and then an override passes, how do you fix that? You've, you've let go of a tremendous amount of staff, you've restructured a program, you've cut a program, and you have to rebuild it from scratch. That's just, that's just poor management is what that is. You know, so I think that's part of why the community reaction to this particular area was so strong, and why I think I'm hearing some consensus. And I certainly feel any solution, any solution to, to the middle school one, we need to look at really, really carefully. Anything else from the committee on this? Yeah?
To Garrett's point about next steps, since we can't convene FinCom right now to take a vote. My suggestion for consideration is that we go through the budget and see what other ideas are out there. And we could arrive at a position where we have a proposal. We could vote, for instance, an unbalanced budget by a certain amount, and that would automatically force this issue with FinCom. We could also vote some kind of a, I don't know how it would work out, maybe we'd have a series of cuts and we'd say, well, if, if this, then not that. But there's, I think we need to finish going through all the ideas that we have, voting on those, and see what we have at the end of that process.
So I think you're right, Mr. Boavon. And now the best laid plans that I had, we're going to have a little bit more of a free flowing discussion now. I think this is a good time to talk about alternatives. And I, I'd like to share with the committee, as I said, I took a macro and a micro approach. The micro approach yielded nothing, and I think I've explained why. The macro approach, I actually wanted to address four areas that I thought about, speaking only for myself, that I heard from the community, a real desire that the school committee looked at. So, and then these are on the larger scale. So I want to address each one. One was athletics. There, I certainly heard from many people that as important as sports are, this, you're talking about cutting core academic courses, isn't there a way that you can cut sports? Miss Dowd, I hate to put you on the spot, but I think the entire athletic budget is about just shy of 600,000, it's like 580, somewhere in there, right? And about half of that is fee subsidized. So if I'm reading that right, and if I'm understanding that right, you know, I apologize, I do have this marked for anybody who, anybody who's interested, it is page 64. So the complete athletics budget for the town is 562,000 dollars. And I believe the offset's close to 400.
The next year is 375.
375, yeah. So what I'm, what I'm saying is, this is illustrative, it's not a suggestion at all, but I'm articulating my thinking on this as people ask the question. So if you were to cut, and I'm, again, not at all advocating for this, but hypothetically, you cut the entire sports program of the entire district, no more sports at all, you would save about 200,000 dollars.
And we'd have to have a bigger meeting room.
And we'd have to have a bigger meeting room. But my point is, I think there's this perception that there's a lot of money there that we can save, and there just really isn't. Nothing that comes close to 200, to 1.4 million dollars. And I will, so the athletics thing I wanted to address. And I will share that a lot of you know that in a previous life, I was a public high school English teacher, and I have vivid memories of a lot of students, but one in particular, who graduated high school and stayed passing his courses because he was a high school athlete. For a variety of reasons, school was not his priority, school was not his family's priority, but by God, when it was football season, it was baseball season, he kept his grades passing. The most delightful kid, the most respectful, one, I, just a wonderful kid. Just school was not his priority, and nothing I did as a teacher was going to change that. But his coaches made sure he was passing English when it was in season. Also, school was, sports were by far his favorite part of the day and what kept him coming to school. So just to make the priority, I certainly value athletics, but I think the perception that that's an area where we can yield great savings is just numbers wise, it's not true. And so I wanted to, I wanted to communicate to the public, I certainly thought about that suggestion and I looked at the numbers. Another area that we certainly heard a lot about was administration. So I wanted to talk about my thinking on that. I think this is on page 50. The entire administration budget, Dr. Doherty?
Yes.
Just over 900,000 dollars, somewhere in that? So again, the idea that we should cut administrators, you should cut the administration, even if we cut the entire administration and had a school run without any leadership, which would be illegal because many of these positions are mandated by state law. But even if we could, actually wouldn't solve the problem. It does not solve the problem. So never mind, picking at the edges doesn't solve the problem. So I looked there, but then I wasn't even further satisfied, satisfied. And I asked Dr. Doherty, and he presented it, I think at our last meeting, to please go through every single FTE with a job description. He articulated to us what every secretary does, what every administrator does, what every principal does, what every assistant principal does. I did not see anything there that would, I keep coming back to destabilizing. Many of those positions to me come down to student safety. You cannot have a building, especially at the high school of this size with this many kids in it, without enough adults to manage that. So I looked at it very, very, very closely. I do not see a cut there, beyond the one that Dr. Doherty proposed, which is in the budget area and the finance area. I don't see another one. I wanted to, I was looking for one. I don't see it. The two other areas I looked at were professional development, and I think this one is very complicated because of reporting to DESI. There's been a lot of confusion about it. I think Dr. Doherty did a good job. I suspect we are going to have to continue to find ways to communicate this more clearly, especially at town meeting. There's a lot of belief that there's a lot of money there. But the discretionary amount is about 50,000 dollars. I thought long and hard about it. I would be open to a discussion about it. It's 50,000 dollars. You zero it out, it's not even a teaching, one teaching position. And you zero it out, and then you say, we know we have teachers who need support in improving academic achievement and know a way to help them. So I, I, I'm open to a discussion on it, but at the end of the day, we would be saving a tiny bit of money that doesn't even begin to address the problem. The final thing I looked at, which is very sensitive, but in full transparency, I want people to know I thought about it, was art and music. Because I heard it. People said, what, have you looked at this? I'll let Dr. Doherty correct me if I get any facts wrong. But in thinking it through, we can't cut it at the elementary level because the teachers need contractual planning time, and they get it while the children are at their specials. So you can cut art and music at the elementary level, then you need to hire people to watch the children. It would make no financial sense. There's no practical way to do it. I don't think anyone would advocate for cutting it at the high school level, especially with our award-winning art and music programs. So the only option is at the middle school level. So we would have a district where you have art and music education to fifth grade, and then three years off, and then start up again in ninth, which is practically, doesn't make logical or organizational sense. It also would have a devastating effect on the quality of the arts programs at the high school, which, as I said, are award-winning. We have award-winning bands and choruses. So I just, when people act like, well, didn't they consider alternatives? Those are four I considered. And I can't defend any of them. I don't think they're the right solution. I, I have to say, for my money, Mr. Robinson gets the MVP award tonight because he solved the problem I was desperately trying to and I couldn't, which is the 400,000 dollar middle school problem. So I'm sharing that with the committee, not because I have a solution, because I don't. I don't have a solution. But I certainly don't want anyone in the committee or anyone in the public to think it wasn't for a tremendous effort.
Thank you, Ms. Broski. I, I just want to emphasize on the administration. I think also we heard, what's tonight, Monday night, I believe Principal Heather Leonard was here from Barrows, and we were talking about the assistant principal positions at the, or stipends, at stipend positions. I think I came to the conclusion that after that discussion and then having a little bit more discussion, that, that really was, that's like a teacher leader. It's a person who's in the building who can be called on really in an emergency. It's not, I, I don't really think it is a sort of a succession planning. It highlighted for me that, you know, that is an area that we've been talking about, that we are, you know, deficient as a district. It just highlighted for me how hard that job is. Those principals have 50 direct reports that they're supposed to supervise and manage. The way that teachers become better is by getting coaching and mentoring and getting evaluated. And we're, we're not addressing that. So. So I appreciate you taking another look at that. I, um, I also just wanna say that I, I looked hard at the foreign language. Obviously, we heard a lot about this from middle school, and I was really struggling with this because, um, I mean, I didn't know exactly where we were gonna go with the cuts, and I really tried to look at the data. I understand everything that people were saying about how important language is, but when we looked, when I looked at the data and Dr. Doherty provided it, there was on average a hundred and twenty students a year that take all four levels of a language in high school. So those are the students that then would, they, in their fourth year, they're taking a level five SEP or honors, or they're taking AP of the language. And we've been talking about how we're going to impact that progression. The proposal, so should this, um, loan not get, uh, approved, and we have to go back to the cut of this program, I just wanna say that the proposal, which was, at least for next year, with the current seventh graders who are taking, have the language right now, they would go into eighth grade, we would be able to serve two-thirds of those students, which is fifty-seven percent more than the average of the last two years of students who have progressed to the fifth year. So I try, I was trying really hard to try to understand this, so I think, you know, if we, if we had to make that cut, we could, we could only do it for just this one year without impacting other students, because then you have sixth graders that aren't getting the extra ELA block, which is part of restoring the language, and you have the seventh graders that are, then aren't getting the language. So I, I think, um, you know, the real, while you could argue, you could, it might be lesser of, um, than some other impacts that we have, it, it, um, it's still, it's very painful. So I'm hoping that we don't have to come to that discussion, but that's, you know, one of, one of my thought processes, and I think that the, um, you know, the, the foreign language, you know, what, what you do in that second year, if we have to make this cut, what you do in the second year is then even a bigger decision. So, um, I wanna add just one more quick thing, 'cause I was, sorry, I could put my glasses on, I'm looking at page thirty-four, and the, um, perhaps we can dialogue with FinCom that, uh, you know, we can make good on this loan, because we returned five hundred and ninety-three thousand in FY fourteen, and two hundred and fifty thousand in FY fifteen, and a hundred and eighteen thousand in FY sixteen. So we're pretty good, and we have a very long history of returning free cash. So if the override were to pass, we would, I believe we could make good on it, but, um, I'm, so I just sort of wanted to highlight that.
That's a really good point.
Elaine, that is a great point.
There we go.
So we, we have, in the past, historically, budgeted based on a set of assumptions, and things like out-of-district PD, um, special education costs, for example, we have to budget for in a way that we make sure that we meet our obligations. Often, it's my understanding, Carolyn, Dr. Doherty, from our conversations, that we don't end up spending as much, and historically, we haven't for some of those estimates, because we have to be safe and conservative in those estimates. So we're being just as safe and conservative in those estimates in this budget as we always have been. Uh, we have a rather, uh, consistent, um, enrollment history in this district, and we have the ability, I think, to predict enrollments and, and student need now to a greater degree than we did when we started this process. So my thought here is that a basis to return these, to pay this loan, is based in part on our historical ability to harvest additional funds at the end of our budget year, that the, and, and if you look at the four hundred and thirty-eight K up to five hundred and eighty-eight K range of this proposal, that's consistent with the ranges we've seen or close to them in the past, so I think that's important information. On the flip side, I wanna just make sure we understand that this loan is on the order of one and a quarter to one and a half percent of our forty million dollar operating expenses. And if those operating expenses grow at three percent next year, hypothetically, um, then you'd be tacking on if we were to have to repay this loan in the absence of additional revenue and additional one and a half percent. Um, but hypothetically, we'd, higher co- this would add to our costs in the future. So I wanna make sure we're aware of that and have a contingency plan and, and a basis to pay the loan back. I really like Elaine's thought on that point.
I'm just curious, um, Jean, do you think, do you, are you recommending that we make suggestions right now?
Uh-huh. Yeah. If you'd like to bring up alternatives, this is a good time.
All right. I'll do that. I'm not, I wanna clarify that, as Dr. Doherty has explained, difficult decisions, um, I've already mentioned most of them to him and, uh, his administrative team. Um, so I'm, I'm not looking for, um, rationale why we shouldn't do it.
Yep.
I'm just gonna make a recommendation that it's feasible to do it. Not a good idea, but, you know, with the circumstances we're faced with, um, maybe it's better than what we currently have. That would be up to the committee to determine. Um, one that's a difficult choice would be, uh, literacy coach, um, that's seventy-eight thousand dollars. My rationale for that is, even though I've heard great things about what our literacy coach has done, um, you know, I looked at our PARC and CAS results, and I see no real appreciable difference between the math and the, and the literacy, or the ELA results. Um, so I'm not really sure, um, why that takes preference over the math, I guess. Um, I find it difficult to justify one over the other. The other part of the reading one is, uh, excuse me, the ELA or the literacy one is that we have reading specialists in each building who are fully trained in the teaching of reading and literacy. Now, I know, um, the, the purpose of the literacy coach is to actually coach, and that's definitely beneficial, but I see the same thing. I'm most tempted to say we should put the math coach back, um, which doesn't help the situation, though. Um, another one is, um, a reduction in, uh, the administration cost center. And again, I've talked at length with Dr. Doherty's administrative staff, um, understanding, you know, I've been in another district, I've seen what I, like, worked closely with other districts, I know the type of administrative teams that other districts have. Excuse me, there's no question, ours is lean, but I also look at it as, you know, it's ten percent of their budget, and, um, you know, maybe it could be made up some other way. I'm not seeing any particular position, but I can say that, um, this one might, might scare a few people, but I know there's a retirement at the middle school.
Let's not talk about specific staff members.
Oh, okay, well, I was just gonna say that maybe there's a creative way to fold positions together.
Okay.
Um, anyways, and then, another two ideas, one is, um, a reduction of the building budget by approximately fifteen percent, and I'll make this statement from my own personal experience, that it's pretty standard, that building principals hold back at least this much or close to this much till the end of the year. And, uh, as I recall, the rationale behind it would be, in the event that, uh, they do not have a full building budget to follow me, they can use these funds, uh, at the end of the school year to purchase materials for the next fiscal year. And, um, so I guess my, my statement would be this, the time has come. Again, I fully understand why they do it, I did it myself, I did it as an administrator, I did it as a teacher, but that's just a recommendation, that's just a thought. Another one would be, um, and this one's risky, but, um, and I don't think I did mention this, 'cause I just came up with it, but, um, would be to use, um, available funds due to staff turnover, and then also, um, the amount of budget that's returned at the end of the fiscal year, so I would recommend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars be, um, adjusted or recommended, uh, to anticipate that be available, um, at the beginning of the school year, is again, due to staff turnover, and also the amount returned to free cash at the end of fiscal year two thousand and eighteen. And I can just, you hear a quick history, two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, um, there was, uh, three hundred and eighty-five thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars available due to staff turnover. This current year, there was two hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars available due to staff turnover. And then fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, we returned, um, approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the town. In this past year, we returned, um, a little over, well, a hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars to the town. So a hundred and fifty, I think, is kinda conservative. For that total, it's four hundred and five thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. Do I, do I think that these are good ideas? I think they're all, you know, these last two that I mentioned are risky, but, um, and, uh, certainly don't feel as though, um, it's a great idea to eliminate any of the coaches, because, um, as Dr. Doherty knows, that, you know, in terms of administration, and, and I've been a strong supporter of the coaches, and, um, was excited to see that we were putting them in place, I've seen them benefit. Teach us greatly, and, and heard from other colleagues who were teaching in other districts that, um, have the, uh, numerous literacy coaches or math coaches available. Each building had a coach, so, anyways, those are different districts that I was for sure. So those are some ideas, not necessarily good ideas, but, um, that's what I thought of.
Can I just ask a clarifying question, Dr. Nye? Are you proposing those, are you advocating for those, or more bringing them up for discussion?
Um, good question. I don't, I don't really wanna discuss them so much, I just wanna throw them out there. I'm, I'm hopeful, under the circumstances with, with Chuck's proposal, um, I think it's premature to do that. I'd rather go through, uh, the process that Chuck brought up to see how that works.
Okay.
You know, uh, these are something that, you know, if we go back to it, um, maybe we, we talk about them then.
Can I just, it's a clarifying?
You can, but I'm just gonna, thank you for that clarification. So it sounds to me like you were doing what I did, which was, you know, sharing, this was my best attempt.
Hmm.
I don't think it's necessarily, as you said, these are not good ideas, but this is what I was thinking. But it also sounds like you perhaps might think Mr. Robinson's is a more palatable approach.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I just-
I just had a clarif- so when you refer to staff turnover, are you talking about someone retiring and, and a, uh, younger person coming in, or, so the salary's low, or is that what, what you-
What, what in- in discussion with, uh, Gail and Dr. Doherty, um, our request and information, that, I guess you, that's what it would most likely be, I would assume. Um, in some years, it's higher than others, I think, uh, these last two years was pretty high. Um, I think the year previous to that, it was low. So it's, again, it's a gamble, I mean, I know, what do we have, two, two to three retirements this year that we know of?
Yes, unfortunately, uh, I believe two of them were budget cuts.
That's right.
So it's-
Those don't count.
Would you let us double count them?
Preferably not in a balanced budget.
I'll try.
So, um, yeah, so that, that would, uh, that would be my, my thought process on it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, did you have something?
She's been waiting.
Okay.
I just, um, I just wanted to say that the, I think Dr. Nye indicated administration was ten percent, it's actually two percent. And, um, maybe Mr. Bobin has additional comments, 'cause unless somebody, I was gonna actually make a motion, but I think maybe he's, I'm ready, though, to make a motion when we're discussing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did the administration figure, that, I think Dr. Nye was looking at it in figure twenty, it's the first row of administration for FY eighteen, seven hundred and fifty-four K.
Wait, I'm sorry, can you give us a page?
Sure, I'm sorry, page thirty-five. It's kinda the master table of, uh, the whole budget. And maybe I misread that, but-
Administration.
Upper right corner. And that's just staffing by cost center, it's a total. Seven fifty-four is what I see in the upper right.
Okay.
So, so seventy-five seemed like ten percent of seven fifty-four.
Oh, I got what you're doing. Yes. Yep.
All right. And to Elaine's point earlier, page thirty-four, that was one in this neighborhood, uh, we have a graph in figure nineteen that shows the amount of school budget returned to town at end of fiscal year. Um, if we decide to pursue this request for a loan from FinCom, in, I, I would ask if, if we could have insight into what, you know, you see some variability here, right? These numbers go from a hundred and eighteen thousand up to five hundred and ninety thousand. I'll tell you, the five ninety looks a lot better to me than the hundred and eighteen, but I know there's a lot of different circumstances in each year. So can we get any insight about what we're thinking this graph might look like for this FY eighteen, or do we really, really not know?
I, I can, yeah, I can try to answer it. The, Gary's, uh, proposal about the, it's a very complicated question.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of variables that go into that. The, the year that it was five ninety was a year that there were out-of-district placements, most of that came from special education. And I believe it was your, you didn't budget it. It wasn't your first budget.
No. It was pre-me.
But there was, there was out-of-district placements that were budgeted that did not come to fruition, which was a good thing. So that, that funding was, was given back to, to the town reserves. Um, there are, it, it, there are at times differences in costs when salaries, when teachers are hired. I think it's very risky, and I think you use the word risky for a very simple reason, um, is that what happens is, especially in positions that may be in high demand, sometimes positions come in higher than the person that left. So then you're actually running in a negative, so that, that could be a problem. But the other thing is, is sometimes you have unanticipated, um, circumstances that occur during year, and I, I will go into, uh, an example without getting too specific, that this year, we did have a person, um, an, an non-represented individual that was out for over, uh, a year, but crossed two fiscal years. And the person, we couldn't get it, we couldn't leave the position vacant, um, and we actually had to hire another person at a little bit lower salary, but was still a salary, it's not like a long-term sub-salary that we could, we could use. So, um, we were actually carrying two salaries for a while. So sometimes those savings have to go to those circumstances. Um, the last piece of this that I, I don't wanna get in a habit of is to limit the building principals when they are hiring, and tell them that they need to hire a person that's cheaper, not necessarily the one that is the best candidate, 'cause I think you go down a dangerous road with that. Um, when you look at retirements, you can get a little savings in retirement, and I, I think the, there was one, the, maybe in the second highest year, um, we did have a large number of retirements that year, and that's why the numbers higher. Next year, we only have, um, I think, two or three retirements. And so, you know, you're not gonna get a lot of savings from that. So I hope I captured.
No, it's very helpful, and to be clear, I'm not suggesting we pay for, we get rid of these cuts with such money. I'm talking about how we would repay the loan that we're contemplating requesting. So it's, as a borrower, how do we explain our creditworthiness, if you would? Um, so there is, as I understand it, you have quite a bit of variability here, but, but there clearly, in some years, has been opportunity to access some additional, uh, funds that could, in theory, be used to repay a loan from, um, this arrangement. Thank you.
Anything else from the committee?
If you have any.
Oh, I, I will get to the public, I truly, truly will, I know that you're not the only person, I will, promise. Anybody else from the-
Have a separate cut.
Oh, do you want to discuss?
Sure.
Okay.
So on Gary's point, I, another thing I looked at, and again, to, as Jeanette said earlier, none of this approached, uh, the level of savings that, that would, um, undo a substantial number of these FTE cuts, but, and another thought thing that I'd done was I looked at the building-based, uh, budget funds, and I know these play an important role, number of respects for principals running, uh, their schools. Um, one thing I did mathematically was I looked at the FY twelve level of, um, these building funds, and I applied the consumer price index from twenty thirteen to twenty sixteen, and I came up with a number that was ten percent less. So one idea was harvesting sixty-eight K, uh, from all of these funds in total, uh, and suggest, suggesting that, uh, but six, ten percent of six hundred and eighty-two thousand, so it's about sixty-eight thousand. Um, so it's another small cut, um, but, you know, I was hoping that, you know, with other people's ideas, we, we might be able to come up with a collection of, of, uh, of- ideas, we, we might be able to come up with a collection of, of alternative ideas that would be, um, more beneficial to students.
Um, I think I'd like to give a couple, a, a little bit of response to that, and, um, just a reaction to it. Building-based budgets was absolutely an area that I looked at very, very carefully as well. It's interesting, I think, Dr. Nye, and you suggested a fifteen percent cut, you were looking at a ten percent. Uh, the most I was comfortable with was five percent. And I would not feel comfortable recommending it. The, the reason is, certainly the high school took a cut this year in their building-based budget. They've already taken a cut. In this proposal, the high school took a cut. So, I certainly would not advocate for additional cutting there. Um, and the fact is, at the elementary level, uh, that no atom consumable stuff is really expensive. And the feedback from teachers and the feedback from parents has been so powerful, and we have new frameworks, and the new test is coming in three years, that this, to me, goes to stability in the system. It's very easy on paper to cut it in five percent, ten percent, it's, you know, and it yields tens of thousands of, low tens of thousands of dollars, too, just for the record, not even half of a position. But, so for me, it was a thought process I had, and I thought to hamstring our, um, I don't even know if that's the right expression, to handcuff our principals so much and not be able to afford the materials they need to do the job to save thirty K, when our problem is this huge, just seemed short-term to me. But I hear, but I hear the thinking, and God knows, I, I went down it, too. I think, um, the only other one I would want to respond to, um, because it's a question I heard, and I think it's, uh, it's one that's gonna come up, is the idea of the literacy coach. And I'll tell you why, I thought about it personally, um, that was certainly on my list, and I'll tell you why I'm comfortable defending keeping it in the budget. Um, two main reasons. One is the grade-three ELA scores we saw this year were highly concerning. Um, and the second is the Eaton Level Three status. That is the elementary school that houses the LLD program, which is specifically language-based learning disabilities. And we heard in November from Principal Sprung that the, the literacy special, I'm sorry, the literacy coach was working really thoroughly in the Eaton School, and I just, I'm not comfortable pulling language support resources from that school this year. Um, but I hear you, and I think it's one, I think it's a question that's gonna come up, so I think it's a good one to have, to have thought through as a committee.
Um, the, the other area that was a area of a lot of thought was the combined professional development spend levels that are not controlled by applicable contracts or legal requirements. Uh, so, quite a bit of our professional development spend is, um, a little confusing to follow becau- until you have it explained to you, but, um, you know, well over seven hundred thousand of that is, is teacher salary, and so that's, that's not something that's being discussed here. If you looked at the other areas that, you know, I contemplated twenty-five, anything from a twenty-five percent to a seventy-five percent, you know, of, of what's left, um, to Jean's point, you end up maybe twenty to sixty K savings. You're, you're, I couldn't find a way to make that, um, really make a substantial impact on the overall picture we're looking at, and it comes at a, at a cost to the people who are benefiting from that training, which I recognize as well. We do have curriculums, it takes a number of years to implement these in the classroom, and we have a new science curriculum from some grades last year. So, again, it's a destabilizing cut to those people that are benefiting from those dollars spent. So, um, unless it was gonna achieve a, some kind of magnificent offsetting benefit for students, which I'm so far not hearing from all the other ideas we've heard, I'm, you know, I, I wonder whether this would be something that would be productive and not just destabilizing.
I, I agree.
Just for clarity, um, everything that Jean said she thought of regarding the literacy coach, I thought of as well. And, um, I'm trying to avoid going into discussions about it in any great detail, only because I don't think we necessarily have to at this point.
Yeah.
Might happen down the road.
Right.
And I don't think it will be anything but really divisive to do that. You asked, if we had ideas, I'd just threw them out, and, uh, I, I would rather not have to go back and forth, um, you know, 'cause, uh, there could be arguments both ways, and, um, I don't think we need to do it at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Nye.
Dr. Nye. I just, to, um, the per pupil, I just sort of wanna look at that, because the, if you go all the way back to two thousand and twelve, yes, but you have to understand, we've been cutting the budget for four years, and we, we did that in the per pupil. So, if you go back to FY fourteen, it was actually higher than the current total per pupil.
Yeah, I actually showed a slide on another meeting.
Right, so, and then, um.
In the question.
Oh, to the question.
Right, it said, I was looking that up, right, so I believe, so I, I just wanna, you know, and then in FY sixteen, yeah, we took it down to five eighty-six, so yes, it's up from FY sixteen to seventeen, it's flat seventeen to eighteen, but the reason it's up from sixteen to seventeen is because we were ravaging that to avoid other things. So, I think it's, you know, whether you go all the way back, and then FY eleven, by the way, right, it was six eighty-five, which, that's, so in FY eleven, it was three thousand dollars higher than it is now. And the, so the downward times in the per pupil is because we were trying to avoid other cuts. That's what this is category has been used for. So, I think you have to be careful when you pick a point in time and sort of look at a percent. So, I just wanted to comment.
I actually have something connected to that, Mrs. Webb. Um, I had asked Dr. Doherty, I think I might have asked you for that information.
You did.
Um, and my reasoning was, I wanted to see how it had changed over time, and in conversations with you, you said that it's pretty much been stable for at least ten years. And when I thought about that, and I recognize we're in a very low inflationary environment, but the fact is, that over time, I mean, probably as a budgeting practice, we should be going in the other direction with this. I mean, if, if we had the revenue and if we weren't constantly struggling to keep level services, I, probably the better approach would be to build in a one, one and a half percent escalator every year, and say, okay, principals, you get this amount, and every year, there'll be a little bit of a bump up to, to address inflation. I'm certainly not recommending it tonight, we certainly can't afford it, um, but I, I think I'm making the same point as you, Mrs. Webb.
Yeah.
I, I just want to make sure we're checking this scorecard here, too. In Figure Two, Three, and Four of the budget, plus on Page Three, right, these are all the, I think, most of the cuts, there may be, Dr. Doherty, is this everything here, these three tables that you're proposing?
What pages?
I'm gonna make sure I have it. Pages Three and Four. So, this should be, this is our roadmap, right? So, so, Ms. Robinson's proposal goes to, as I, just, just a very small number of these items, right? So, it goes to the kindergarten paraeducators for fifty K, it goes to the elementary school teachers, one oh five K, which is affected by the change in enrollment. So, it's not actually a cut we need to make, could make, don't need to. And of course, the four thirty-eight K for the middle school teacher. So, that, to my math, and if I was wrong before with my maths, you better check me, um, I was, it's around forty percent of them, of the money here, and maybe the accountant can check, but, you know, it's not, it's not anywhere near all of the total cuts that are here.
Forty percent of the cuts?
Yes, of the cuts, right.
Forty percent of the cuts, okay.
So, so are we saying, I haven't heard any comments on the other sixty percent of the money here, are we saying that, are there any other comments on all these other proposed reductions that are here?
I've been thinking that exact question, and I think what it showed, we would not like to make any of these cuts. Let's start with that. So, to your point, we would like to not make any of them. Um, I think the middle school one, for the reasons that people have talked about from a systemic perspective, unmantling a program that potentially, if the fiscal environment changed in a year, we wouldn't need to. I think we all have a kind of general negative rate, we have to do, we have a desperation about saving that, so that that doesn't happen, I do. The, I, I am getting comfortable with this idea, um, because, on the one hand, we're asking the finance committee in the town to support, um, a very big infusion to support our schools for one year. So, it's a big ask, and I do think that a good faith effort to, um, I, I guess I think it's as much as we can ask for.
Are we prepared for the question, what about next year? So, the Cubs won the World Series this year, that's great for some of us, but it's not gonna happen every year. So, we have a contingency, positive contingency, if we receive revenue from an override that settles this, how we resolve this loan. But I, I want to make sure we're prepared for that and get people's thoughts on that. And then, secondly, just to, what if we get the question, is this for operating revenue? Right, are you, are you asking for funds to run your shop, rather than for a one-time thing? So, the science curriculum, one hundred and fifty K for Part Two, but we've still got Part Three to go.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, four hundred and thirty-eight K for not restructuring the middle school, which is a, I think, unique on this sheet in being a structural.
Yep.
I think harm to students, that would be very difficult to unwind, and very difficult to unwind late in the game. The later we wait to do this, uh, the more likely it's gonna be more and more difficult to, to change back to a longer day, retain the people we need to, and get everybody geared up for what would have been a year that looked a lot like this year. So, those are my questions.
So, I don't know whether you're asking me, but I'll, I'll, so, that's, to your question of whether it's operating, or whether it's a one-time, that, that's part of the negotiation with the FinCom. That's not something that I've decided tonight. I mean, uh, I'd, I'd like it to be a one-time and then the override, but, uh, we, you know, that's up to all of us to decide how we want to approach the FinCom on that, 'cause we could do it either way. You know, I, you know, I think there's other things that we're still working on that, you know, leave it at that, and so.
I don't know if this is appropriate now, but I'd just like to make a motion to close discussion and to just, um, go with.
Yeah.
What Mr. Robinson has come up with, and, um, I don't, I don't really see the value of going into it in detail, uh, further cuts or going back and forth in terms of the, uh, the value of all of these cuts. I'd just like to, personally, that's my opinion.
So, I will accept that motion if there's a second, but that does not mean discussion ends. For people who've been waiting to speak, a motion on the table and then a second, discussion can continue.
Second.
So, I will absolutely call for public comment.
Oh, I don't mean.
You, you meant like, you were, you felt that the committee was gonna. Certainly. Was that a second?
My second.
So, just for the minutes, we have a motion for Mr. Nye to adopt Mr. Robinson's proposal, in total?
Yep.
Oh, that would be very nice.
It's the budget.
It's the budget, right.
It's the new bottom-line budget.
That would be very nice.
So, the bottom-line budget is forty-one million.
You have to, you have to make this motion.
Okay.
Well, if you want to.
Forty-one million, eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-one.
Can you do that again?
One more time.
Forty-one million.
Gotta go slow.
Yeah, I'll pass the sheet to you.
That would be good.
Passing notes.
Thank you. But, but he can refer to the particular, you, you couldn't possibly read all that in motion, just the, the strategy proposed by Mr. Robinson.
Yep.
Okay.
Therefore, are we voting on the actual budget?
You can make an amendment.
Okay.
Yep.
So, I make a motion that we, um, go forth with a budget to our, um, town manager of forty-one million, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars, six hundred and sixty-one dollars.
And then second?
Second.
Okay. Um, and we will have discussion continue. Did you have a?
I have one more thing to suggest that would raise this number modestly.
So, what that is, is I'd like to make a.
Can I do that later?
I'd like to make a friendly amendment.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Sorry, Dr. Docser, you've been very patient.
Um, when we were asked about creative, um, revenue sources, I know I asked the question in the book about, um, the issue of the rise, the point five cut in, um, a RISE teacher that was going to be filled by a high school teacher. So, it's sort of a hit to, it's a hit to the high school. And I did ask the question about raising the tuition for RISE to cover that one. Um, and I think, I was trying to look for the answer. I think that the answer was that we're, it might push us out of the competitive range for RISE. And I wonder with the waiting list that we already have, the quality of the program that it is, the convenience of being in our own town, whether that could outweigh the fact that it might be on the more expensive side, um, especially given our finances right now. So, would we really lose that many students if we were on the more expensive side of such a stellar preschool program that fed directly into the schools? That the children will be in.
Thank you, Dr. Docser. Yes, please.
I think we looked at a five percent increase and a ten percent increase. So, the five percent increase is what is in this proposal, this proposed budget. If you went with a ten percent increase, that probably would cover the thirty thousand dollars. Um, I guess I would ask Mrs. Butts probably to speak to the waiting list piece, 'cause I know you're about to do a lottery in a week or so.
Yeah.
And there's a pretty big waiting list.
It was a good, close five percent on, on our application pending school pay. The one that we discussed on it.
Thank you. Anything else from the committee?
Other than, she mentioned, supporting that.
Can I just, can you repeat that, her comment?
Oh, yeah, if you want to.
She says there was a pushback.
I didn't hear.
There was a pushback.
Oh, right, I didn't hear her answer very well.
Okay. Can you just repeat the answer that Mrs. Butts just gave?
I can speak louder.
That'd be great.
Yeah, could you just, sorry, I didn't hear you.
Um, there was, we put a five percent increase on the application pending school committee approval, and we didn't have anybody comment on the change. We had not one comment on the five percent increase.
That puts it over eight hundred. A lot of people that are interested in coming to RISE despite that. Where does that put us?
And, so I would, I would support that as well, that increase of the tuition. And I also, having taught down there, recognize the significance of the value of the music improvement at that grade level. And, um, I think it's, takes, uh, a unique, um, expertise in music education to teach down there. I don't know if you can necessarily have the high school teacher go down there and necessarily be as effective as what you probably have now, so I would strongly endorse that.
A concern I have is that, um, we were required to send out applications before the budget process, just as a, as a matter of calendar and what happened. So, the solution was, Dr. Doherty and his staff believed this was a potential increase, so the application said pending school committee approval. I would have concerns about going out to those families now and saying, not only did the school committee approve that fee increase, surprise, um, I, I would have some concerns about kind of truth in advertising, and, and that just, I, I, I have a kind of a visceral reaction to that, um, which doesn't mean that I don't think it might be something to explore in the future.
On this topic, still?
And then you're next. Are you on this topic?
No, it, is it, is this on the same topic?
It is.
Go ahead.
So, I, I, well, I'm, I'm talking about the reductions with Mr. Robinson's proposal, or did you want to talk about RISE, right? Okay, so go ahead.
Yeah. I just wanted to clarify, so we had in the questions and answers book, oh, page forty-five, uh, we had the current and proposed amount, so I just sort of want to clarify what Mrs. Docser is proposing and, um, Mr. Nye spoke about, and we heard from Mrs. Butts, is that the current, like, for the five full days, the current rate is seven fifty, it would be eight twenty-five instead of the seven ninety? Just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly, that's what we're talking about. It would go from six hundred a month to six thirty instead, I, six sixty, for the four days. Okay, so we're talking about, then the program's costing between eight hundred and twenty-five and two hundred and sixty-five, about two hundred and sixty-three, correct? I just want to make sure I'm understanding what that increase would mean.
That's the five percent.
Okay, so, I'm, I don't know why I want to put this in my head the way that my kids were, just sort of thinking about it. I can't imagine what we paid in, um, I don't know, nineteen ninety-nine. But, so somebody paying two eighty a month, it would go up to three ten. And the question is, is that, is that going to be, have a negative impact versus right now, they're thinking that their two eighty a month is gonna go up to three hundred, right? So. I'm trying to look at the numbers to get a sense of whether this is the right or wrong thing to do.
Anything else from the committee? There are people in the, the audience who I think are very eager to go in. Okay. Oh.
I just want to make sure I'm following the math here of Mr. Robinson's proposal. Just make sure we've all got this right of what we're proposing. So, we've got, everything in Figure Four is it. So, we've got everything in figure four is it, everything in figure three is it? Two hundred and eighty-eight?
Wait, wait, wait.
Page four.
Page four.
Page four.
I want to make sure we know what, I know what I'm doing when I raise my hand.
Page four.
Figure two.
So the proposal, we've got, we've got the cuts laid out before us. Figure two is personnel, figure three is non-personnel, figure four is changing offsets.
Yep.
Non-personnel reductions, they stay, two eighty-eight, four oh five, correct? No changes there, I haven't heard anyone change those.
Why am I looking at one sixty-three?
One sixty-three.
One sixty-three, four oh five plus one twenty-five.
Oh, you added these two, okay.
I hope, I hope I did.
Plus.
Um, I, that was my intent. Um, and then I go over to figure two, and we're re-reversing the kindergarten paraeducators, three point three FTA for fifty K, so we're not doing that. We're not doing the four thirty-eight K for ele, for middle school teachers at seven FTE, right? And how are we counting the elementary classroom teachers? Because that's a cut we don't need to make, but is it effectively something we're not doing here?
So you don't need as many teachers?
Understood.
So it's, it's not.
So for the purposes of math and determining our final budget, do we count this as a reduction or not?
You do, you do.
What's currently in the budget would stay, because we had taken out the two people. It was just if you wanted to bring it down by two more people and use that funding to go somewhere else. So it's a net.
I, I'm not sure that's, I'm, I may be misunderstanding both of you, but I'm not sure that's the question Nick is asking. I think what he's asking is if, I think he's trying to come to a, what is the new reduction in personnel if we adopt Mr. Robinson's proposal? What's the new reduction in personnel? And his question is, should we just not count that one oh five or should we? And I think we should. Those are two positions that are currently budgeted in FY seventeen that we will be cutting in FY eighteen.
Not, that is.
We're not, now, when I say cutting.
That is correct, yes.
Not, not through. We're not refilling. Not through layoffs and not.
It's a true tradition.
Yes. So, I understand from the educational and impact, but from a financial impact, we will still be cutting a hundred and five thousand from the budget.
Yes, that's right.
Okay, so you should include that in your calculations. Thank you.
All right, so I, I get the number of five hundred and forty-five thousand for remaining personnel reductions.
Can you say that again?
Five hundred and forty-five thousand even is what I get.
I'll double check it now.
Okay. And then we add the two eighty-eight, four oh five, and we get eight thirty-three, four oh five. The two eighty-eight was from the other page.
I think you're going, I, everyone down here can understand you. You're gonna have to slow it way down.
All right, so we.
Well, I just, can you give the two eighty-eight again, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I've just added one sixty-three, four oh five, figure three and figure four. These are the non-personnel reductions. So I just want to make sure we're making the correct proposal. So this is a loan that we're, loan package we're putting together here, a request. And we're doing something else here too, right? And Jean, this was a separate agenda item, as I understood it. We're adding something in here that is not a cut, it's more spending, it's a hundred and fifty K to implement the science curriculum year two.
Yep.
So that's a different animal, right?
Yep.
So do we want to talk about those ideas now with Mr., Dr. Nian's, you know, motion pending, or how do we want to handle that?
You can just, you can say anything you'd like.
Go right on, okay. Uh, so we have a hundred and fifty K there too, so, Gail, is that in our number? We've got eight thirty-three, four oh five, remaining reductions from level service, and then we're adding in a hundred and fifty thousand in spending. So I just want to make sure that when we finally get to vote on what the final number is that we're going to pass on, and maybe we come back to this another time to allow.
Remember that we provided to Dr. Nian included the one hundred and fifty thousand, so it's the existing budget that we had presented, plus the four thirty-eight, plus the one fifty, are the only, the paras washed themselves, because you would increase the fee and increase the offset.
Okay, so you've accounted for all the remaining cuts, that, or reductions that were in the superintendent's recommended budget, figure two, figure three, figure four in your number, just want to make sure we're on the same page, literally.
So, figure three and figure four were in the, in the recommended budget that we
provided.
Which was forty million, eight forty-seven, six sixty-six. I, I might, I guess I have to make an amendment then, to suggest that, um, we raise the tuition for our wonderful RISE program, um, to offset that cut, so that that is not a cut that we will be making.
So, that's ten percent?
Yes.
Do you increase the, from go to five to ten percent increase?
Because that would cover that thirty thousand, right?
That is correct, I just want to make sure of that.
Yes.
And I want to make sure that I'm clear on where we're at. We have a motion to adopt Mr. Robinson's proposal. Is there a second on that amendment?
Yes.
A second from Dr. Nian.
Wait, we already did that.
No, on the.
I second, wait, wait a minute.
Right now, we're doing Linda's amendment on RISE tuition.
Okay, Linda's amendment.
Linda, yes, thank you. Linda made the amendment, Dr. Nian seconded the amendment. Um, I would like to, I, I'd like the committee now to give me a sense of how many amendments we can expect, because if it's a whole bunch, we're gonna have to take a different process. If it's one more, we can do this all in one fell swoop. So, Mr. Blavin has an amendment. Does anyone else in the committee anticipate having an amendment at this point? All right, Mr. Blavin.
So I, my amendment would be a proposal to freeze and not raise the caps on athletics and extracurriculars, so we would not be raising that. Gail, I believe you priced that around eighty-five hundred, but.
For the athletics, yes.
For the athletic, and the extra was very small, but would you, is eighty-five hundred reasonable to budget for that combined? So, so the individual caps would go up, I'm sorry, the individual fees would go up as indicated in the superintendent's proposed budget, but the family caps would not go up.
That would, that is an estimate based upon prior year numbers, because we don't have full year this year, so there is a, depending if the number's coming higher this year, free or reduced, it could be higher number.
But out of the best available information, it's eighty-five hundred dollars is the cost.
Yep.
So I would propose to make a corresponding cut to the building fees overall for an equal amount. So out of six hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, I would propose an eighty-five hundred dollar reduction in aggregate, shared according to the formulas, per pupil formulas.
So, decrease the per pupil by the eighty-five hundred dollars?
So you would take the six hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars and change that is in all of the combined eight building budgets, and my proposal is to reduce that by eight thousand, five hundred dollars in aggregate. The share that each school would feel of that reduction would be proportional to their current per pupil number. And the result would be that no family would have to pay more in aggregate for athletics and extracurriculars than they did in FY seventeen. Thank you.
I just want to make sure I understand it, because I'm taking notes. I understand the cutting the fees by, uh, the, the per, the, the building P, um, the building-based fee. No, 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 the principals per building fees by a total of eighty-five hundred dollars.
Right.
And your objective is to use that money, can you repeat what you said about the athletic family cap?
So we're spending more money by freezing these fees, we're spending eighty-five hundred dollars, and rather than asking FinCom for that money, I'm asking the building principals for that money by reducing the six hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars by eighty-five hundred dollars, and then sharing that among the eight buildings in proportion to whatever their current ratios are. We have responses.
Yeah, please.
Alternative suggestions?
Yes.
To make it slightly.
Please.
Cleaner?
Cleaner would be good.
Cleaner, so.
Same cost center.
Same cost center?
Sure.
So, slightly different number, um, so if we decrease, if we don't increase the cap, we, we would have to decrease the offset within the athletics. We were able to, if Tom was here, I would say, Tom, we were able to renegotiate the pool rate, which is above the savings of sixty-one hundred. My suggestion would maybe just to say we budget sixty-one hundred dollar for family cap, offset it with the pools, keep it all within athletics.
That's fine for me.
And get to the same place.
I like that idea.
Okay, so now, this is where I need.
So you withdraw the motion.
I was about to say, I need a Roberts rules person, so.
You withdraw the.
If you would like, would you like to withdraw your motion? Your amendment, let me rephrase that.
Oh, yes.
They're making the adjustment in the, you're doing.
Well, I would withdraw the amendment, but propose an amendment that, a different amendment.
It, it won't change.
Won't change. But we're not raising the. We're, I want to make clear that we're not, we're agreeing not to raise the family caps for athletics. Okay, does that have to be changed?
That does have to be an amendment.
That's in the budget now. So my proposal would be, if I understand Gail correctly.
To not raise the cap.
To not raise the cap for, for athletics or extracurriculars. And I'm including all extracurriculars in that, uh, and, and pay for that by, Gail, please give me the right language here.
We would pay for it in the savings we have achieved in what, right now, we, a fact certain, we know the pool rates have been decreased, and we have heard that the ice rates are not going up, so we have savings within the athletics.
So as a result of strong negotiating skills on the part of the team at this table, from Dr. Doherty's team.
That team.
We have achieved, Team Doherty has achieved a reduction in swimming that has frozen the caps on athletics and extracurriculars, so.
And ice.
And ice, and we are thankful for that, thank you.
And, and you're saying family cap?
Family cap only.
Not, not individual, I just want to make that clear.
Family only.
Right, 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 but the family cap. So the individual, and there's a second from, uh, Dr. Nian, so we have a motion and two amendments on the table.
I, I just want to highlight that I would not have supported that, because that would have been taking money out of our core academics, our, our very, very slim per pupil budgets.
But we're not doing it.
I know, I, but I just, it, it's contrary to some of the input we heard, and I, so I'm very pleased that there was good negotiation.
Good.
Um, I just want to clarify that our public will be able to speak before we take any votes.
Absolutely, I think I said that. I hope I said that, yes. We're having trouble keeping track of amendments.
Can I, I just want to get a, I don't want, uh, anyone to think that we're adding that science in, it's something we, it's something we have now, uh, so I, I just, because it's not shown in the cuts, I don't want people to think it's a new program or something. All right.
It's year two.
I, I think that's a really good point, Mr. Robinson, it's the year two that we, um, that we committed to a three-year implementation. I, that's a very good point.
It wasn't a cut, but you stated that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Doherty.
Sorry. It wasn't a cut, but you stated publicly in the beginning of the whole process that we were not going to add that.
Right.
So in a sense, it's a cut.
So, I'd love to take some public comment and input at this point, unless anyone in the committee has, um, anything additional. Yes, thank you, sir. Yeah, approach the microphone over here, please, and if you could state your name and street, that would be very helpful.
Uh, my name is Michael DeGiorgio, um, I live on Curtis Street. Um, I've got a number of points that I've just been jotting down over the night, so I apologize if this is a little bit lengthy, but, um, and I, I'm, and just maybe the time of the night and I'm hungry, but I just find it a little bit frustrating that we're talking about allocating where eighty-five hundred dollars are relative to fees and, and capping costs, and it's like arranging the chairs in the Titanic, um, where we have much bigger problems to solve. Um, with that said, um, I also feel that, and, and I agree with, uh, Ms. Snowdod, that, you know, borrowing money at this stage is, um, is not a sustainable opportu, not a sustainable option. Um, unfortunately, I think people have short-term memories, and it will get to that point where, oh, you guys were able to squeeze out, you know, you guys were able to, you know, massage things at the last second, because you are talented people, um, and there's no mistaking that, but we're going to end up with this problem again next year, and I think by making it, not that you have a choice to make it painful or less painful, but we as a community are in this situation together. This is something that we've, we've made for ourselves, so I think the time is now to not, um, ask for a loan. Uh, I like the idea of, of coming back with a, um, unbalanced budget and let the finance committee figure out a ways to solve that, but the idea of quoting it, or, excuse me, um, structuring it like a loan, i- it's just, it just bothers me. If, if the finance committee wants to give the school committee, um, free cash, that's different, all right? Um, but that's up to them to decide. Um, I'd also like to say that as a parent of a RISE student, and a parent of hopefully a RISE, uh, my second child going to RISE, um, I'd be more than happy to have additional fee. I don't mind paying the additional fee, even after we already have the notification that it's going up five percent. Um, I agree with the points that the list, the waitlist is long, and it's long for a reason, because the quality of the education is, is, is bar none. So you pay what you get for it, you get what you pay for, excuse me. So, I think it's, it's not outrageous to, to add the additional five percent. Um, and I guess my last que, comment, which is really more of a question, with the, we're trying to save, there were comments to the fact that, um, removing the middle school teachers would be devastating to the program, the, the language program, uh, and, and I can understand that. Um, but we're talking about seven FTEs at four hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Is it an all or nothing, um, number that we feel is devastating? And, actually, I'm sorry, if you just, I'll just finish my thought and then I'll let you enter. Um, reason why, if it is, if it isn't an all or nothing, right, why don't we look at pulling and, pulling from other, um, programs that would be less devastated if they were reduced this year? I mean, again, I don't like the idea of reducing anything, but you mentioned, uh, rec, uh, athletics, two hundred thousand dollars, and I'm not recommending we get rid of it, but, um, you know, taking that two hundred thousand, I think it would be less impactful to rebuild, have to rebuild that, use that money to bring in half of the three point five FTEs, take less of an impact on the language, uh, program, and, you know, again, unfortunately, it's kind of the, you know, borrowing today, borrowing, excuse me, borrowing from Peter to pay Paul, but, um, I'm just trying to understand why, you know, i- i- again, is the seven FTEs an all or nothing thing, and if it is that impactful, what other areas are not, can we look at that won't be as impactful? Thank you.
I'm gonna, thank you for the questions, and your patience, and waiting for us to go through what's clearly a, a long deliberation. We haven't voted yet. Um, Dr. Doherty, do you want to take that? There's at least one part I want to address, but.
The, the middle school piece has to be looked at as a whole package, um, because it puts back the entire middle school structure. The only way you could, um, change the structure is to take all of those seven FTE out, in order to put it back in, you have to put all seven FTEs out. So you have, we had to, to get to the schedule that we would be proposing, we would have to cut a subject out of each of the three grades, and that's where you get the seven FTE.
And I wanted to address the hypothetical I gave away earlier in the evening about the athletics, because I want to be a hundred percent clear on this. The point I was trying to make was that the absolute most we could get out of athletics is about two hundred thousand dollars, and let me be clear, the cost of that is not a single athletic program in the Reading Public Schools. So I don't want anyone to think that there is two hundred thousand dollars to be saved, there definitely is not. The, the absolute most we could get is two hundred thousand, and that means no football team, no soccer team, no swim team, no sports at all, um, and that, my point was that's something I could never in a million years advocate for, particularly because, to your point, even if you decimated it, which would have just unimaginable, unimaginable impact in the community and on our students, uh, still doesn't even come close to solving the problem, you know? So that was the point I was trying to make with that. More to correct a perception I've heard in the community that that's an area we could tackle, I just don't see that it is. Thank you for the questions. Oh, um, Ms. Perry and then Mr. Irina.
Paula Perry, and I am sort of talking with my FinCom hat on. I just want to clarify, as you were talking about, you know, you often give back some money at the end of the year, and it can vary, and you were talking like that, some of the loan payback. I do want to clarify, so we don't double count things, that's built into our assumption of regeneration. So you just want to be careful double counting things, that's all. So that's really already built into the formula of regenerating a million dollars a year. And that's why we're comfortable using a million dollars out of free cash. We expect it to basically be a wash and regenerate.
I know you've been at a million meetings. I've seen you at them all. And for that kind of input is exactly why I'm so glad that you do. Thank you. That perspective only someone at FinCom could have brought, so thank you. No, if you could, times it by twenty, you'd be all set. Thank you. Mr. Arena.
Good evening. John Arena, Reading Board of Selectmen. Just call me John. Mr. Arena's my dad. You can't do a loan. There's really no practical way to do a loan. Think about it. It's like borrowing a dollar today and offering to pay it back with the two dollars I give you next year. It's, the town doesn't, the schools don't have any money that the town doesn't give them. What you could do is make a one-time request of FinCom and ultimately Town Meeting. However, what I'm hearing here tonight is a suggestion that some of that might be operating funds, and the prospect of using free cash for operating funds is not the way it's used. It also opens up, I think, a problem, pardon me?
That's not true. We're using a million, using money right now to balance the million dollars that's being used for operating funds.
That was a decision by FinCom. This would now set a precedent where an out-of-balance budget is used, is now goes to FinCom for balance. You can certainly do it. I'm not saying you can't do it, but imagine if the town did the same thing and said, we've got to go get the COPS paid for, why don't we make an adjustment? It just sets a precedent, and this would be the second year of such a precedent. What you could do is look for one-time things. For example, the science curriculum. I believe the town manager's already offered at a previous date to fund the second tranche of school, of science curriculum. There might be other one-time events that would be justified as well. But I think opening up the conversation to funding operating expenses through the free cash path is really a bit of an end around it. It's fine on a one-time basis, perhaps. Maybe there's enough stretch in it, but it's, it just sets a precedent. I think the school is obligated to submit a budget, and the town manager is obligated to balance it. I think at the end of the day, it may, it may simply be that you do the best you can, you submit what you can, and by all means, talk to Town Meeting, excuse me, talk to FinCom. If this were to pass at April Town Meeting, that's one outcome, but you have to plan that it may not pass, and you're right back where you are tonight. So you actually have to have almost, you have to have two outcomes. You know, again, it's an A and a B problem. But I think the prospect of treating it as a loan, it doesn't compute. There's no way for you to pay it back except for money that you'd get out of next year's budget that you'd turn right around and hand back. So it would just add to next year's budget. It's, it's really no way to do what you're describing, I don't believe. Thank you.
It was, John, it was described as a loan to the override, to an override. In other words, if an override is put on the ballot, we would commit that, part of that override, which we've done before, part of that override money would go back to, or would go to, free cash.
You'd almost have to say that you defined the next budget without paying it. You define a forthcoming budget that had no repayment element, and then that budget would be diminished by the repayment. But you'd have to do that in advance so everyone could be convinced that the repayment was actually reduced as opposed to simply grossing up next year's budget, if you follow what I mean. You'd have to actually take the, take the cost of repayment, to use a bad word, out of the following budget, and therefore you'd be underfunded in the following year as well. It'd be another tough year.
And as I said to Mr., I don't know how to pronounce it, Wawed, earlier, that will be part of what we need to determine, whether it's a one-time or whether it goes into the base. And I think you just mentioned that, you know, we can't call it a loan if it goes into the base, so.
Yeah, just to amplify the comments made by Paula, all of the unspent dollars flow back into free cash, and I don't think there's any vehicle by which they're withheld, that I know of. I think they flow back, they're unspent, and that's the vehicle by which recharging occurs. So I'm not sure what guidance I can give you. I don't believe what you're doing is actually practical. I think your best way to approach it is to try to allocate one, propose that one-time items, like the science curriculum, might possibly be candidates. Discuss that with FinCom. But putting so much of the operating, even here tonight, I'm hearing, what about adding back here, adding back there? I think putting that in front of Town Meeting, I don't know how that discussion goes, and if it fails, you're right back where you are tonight.
I think you bring up a really good point, Mr. Arena. If it fails, we are right back where we are. And I think that the decision, if we were to make it, to pass an unbalanced budget is no small decision, and it communicates, it would communicate, that the school committee is unwilling to endorse a budget that decimates the middle schools in this way.
Exactly. Well said.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nye. Dr. Nye. Ms. Williams.
Hi, Alicia Williams, Forty Marla Lane. In regards to ten percent tuition increase for the RISE, applications have gone out, and I think that it would kind of, you know, they've said that there's a five percent increase on them, and I think it would be kind of a slap in the face to the parents that have budgeted for these, for the school and for this increase. Although I personally would pay a great sum of money to send my child to RISE, at this point, it's going to leave a really bad taste in people's mouths, not to mention the chaos that I think it would cause for Ms. Debbie's office and for Denise to kind of have to call all those parents and say, listen, we said five percent. We're just kidding. It's going to be ten percent. I think it's going to maybe anger some of the residents in Reading, and I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Coram.
Jeffrey Coram, Ridge Road. I think I have to agree with Mr. Robinson's proposal to ask for more money from free cash. I mean, I pointed out yesterday, you know, and as did you, that even if you take that money out, there's still, you know, there's something over a million dollars of free cash above the seven percent that was, that the FinCom has asked to keep in there. To Mr. Arena's point, sorry, to John's point, we did regenerate three million dollars in free cash last year. Part of that was about one point five million dollars in revenue that came in above projections. So to some extent, by projecting conservatively, the town has really clamped the school committee's ability to fund its, the proper operation. So to say you can only use this money for one-time expenses when if you had budgeted for more into the bud, if you had budgeted revenues higher so that you weren't regenerating it as free cash, but as, as part of the actual revenues, you would have that money to spend as part of the operating budget. So I, you know, I don't see that that is such a big problem to be taking this for re-operating budget for free cash. And I also think that Mr. Robinson's correct, that if you're looking at eight point something million dollars in free cash, it's a hard sell to go out to the voters and say, we need to take more money from you. We need to raise your taxes because this eight million dollars, oh, we can only use that for one-time things, and we, we haven't found enough one-time expenses to spend it on, so we're just going to let it sit there because it makes us feel more comfortable at night. I don't know, I can't see it going to explain to these three kids here. I'm sorry, one of you will not be able to take foreign language next year. You had half a year in seventh grade. You're not going to get that other half year in eighth grade. You'll have an easy time in ninth grade when you take, retake Level One of French or Spanish. And all those sixth graders out there, three hundred students, sorry, you don't get foreign language next year. I think that's really tough to do because we want to keep this free cash for one-time expenses. So, again, I support Mr. Robinson's proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Coram. Yes, thank you for your patience. I know you've been wanting to speak.
Brian O'Meara, Batchelder Road. I just have one question, more clarification. And Mr. Robinson, thank you for the proposal. I appreciate it. It's encouraging. But the return of the two elementary positions, I thought I understood it at the beginning based on the budget assumptions, but then I was unclear on it again after some of the conversation. Could you explain what that is? Because initially, I thought those positions were coming back, but it clearly sounds like that's not the case. Can you provide detail on that? I'm just trying to explain this.
Do you want to take this, Dr. Darty?
They are coming back.
Okay. That's good news. I just want to be able to tell people that. So.
It's very good news, and just to add to it, I, based on current enrollment projections, we can't make any promises, but the retention of those two positions at this point looks like all elementary classes next year will be within school committee guidelines, which is something we did not know if we would be able to do for one more year. And I would say for one more year. I think there's some optimism around this proposal, but I don't want to lose sight of the fact that this is a one-year solution. This is the beginning of a conversation, not the end.
And to that point, just so I understand, if you were to take this to FinCom and FinCom says no, those two positions are still coming back. Those are off the table.
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Dr. Darty, that's my, yes, I just want to make sure I'm clear on that. Yeah, Ms. Williams?
I also, so, right now, we have ninety-two teachers, and this, there's a hundred fifty thousand here, which is, and that's two retirements.
Hundred and five.
Sorry.
Hundred and five.
No, this is a hundred and five, and we'll be at ninety.
Correct.
And that's what we need. And for folks who didn't see the last meeting, the reason that is acceptable is we've seen a decrease in kindergarten enrollment that.
Kindergarten and first grade.
Kindergarten and first grade enrollment, so that those positions which were anticipated as being necessary in November, we now know are looking like they are not.
But no one's losing their job.
Correct.
And it will be accomplished through attrition and not through layoffs.
That was all I wanted to say.
Okay. Anything else from the committee or the public?
Can you just say, our CTV's switched off, so we're no longer allowed. Maybe report, but you're no longer allowed.
Okay, thank you. I think we need to soldier on.
I just wanted to clarify that I am not necessarily against the loan idea. My, my point was that I think that we have the passion, the momentum, and I think that I heard last night, we have people interested, I hope I'm right, that are interested in working again towards the override solution. And so I don't want to wait a year and lose that and have people saying back to us, well, we found the money and we can do that again. So I just want to clarify that my encouragement of the override sooner is not against asking for the free cash to avoid the cuts of seven teachers and a language program and the LA program in the middle school.
Amy, hit her, Amy. Thank you. Oh, Amy, thank you.
Amy Kolbart, Let's Circle. I just, kind of tagging along with that, first of all, thank you, Mr. Robinson, for your proposal. Certainly makes me hopeful, but I am concerned about the override component, and I know you can't focus on that. You need to do what's best for the kids to save these programs now. But your proposal did specifically say, you know, going for another override in twelve months, which I know isn't up to the school committee, but I'm interested in why your timing of twelve months, because I am thinking that the people who are motivated now, that maybe weren't even paying attention before, when they see that, you know, it looked like it was going to be the end of days and now it's not, they're going to say, like was mentioned, oh, they always find the money, it'll be, you know, in the past. So my concern is, I'm wondering if you said twelve months, because then you will have to do something like this again, and more things will be on the table, and you will then go for a quick override with people again facing these kinds of cuts.
I use the twelve months because I was listening to some of the collective wisdom from the Board of Selectmen last night, and I just think we're putting our backs against the wall. But that's not our decision. I mean, if the, if they, if someone wants to put it on for April, that's fine. I mean, I'm just, that's my opinion, that I think we need that time to.
So it wasn't sort of in conjunction with the budget process, in that you would have a new budget that looked just as dire, if not more, that would motivate people to?
No.
Okay.
And I just want to clarify that you're bringing up some good points. This proposal that Mr. Robinson has brought before the committee is kind of dependent on a lot of things that we do not control.
Right.
Such as, will there be an override? How much will the override be for? Will it be in April? Will it be, that's completely outside of our purview. We're just responding to a, that's a maybe right now, and there's a lot of maybes here. We don't know what FinCom's reaction's going to be. We don't know what the, but I, I do have to, I, you think you're hearing a lot of applause for this. Applaud, Mr. Robinson, for attempting to try to keep us from falling off this particular brink, which I think there's a lot of consensus around the fact would be devastating.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
I, I actually, I actually heard loud and clear from the selectmen last night that they're looking for us to take a stand, the school committee to take a stand, and to say what we need and what we want in terms of an override. So I think, no, no, not tonight, but.
I was talking about the date.
We said we would talk about that after we voted this budget. I completely agree.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, that this budget is challenging enough. Sir, you wanted to speak?
Jim Martin, Charles Street. I applaud Mr. Robinson's proposal. I think it's a terrific idea. I think it gives us a chance to sit back and develop a solid business plan going forward. Gives us a chance to review all of the necessary items that maybe we would put forth in an override. And I think it also, I don't know whether you call it motivation, let's not run around town with our hair on fire, you know, the atomic bomb's not going to drop on us tomorrow, and perhaps some sober thinking in time between overrides, the one year, I think, is a good suggestion. If we do it too soon, the perception in town is that the management process has not had enough time to digest all of these budget questions and all of these deficit questions that we have. We have a couple of issues with the library. There's still spending there occurring. We still have some issues with the lawsuits and whatever percentages, tonnage is put on top of the settlement, I believe.
Could you repeat that last?
Is there some percentage added to the settlement for not?
Are you talking about the high school?
The high school, the settlement, yes.
Do you want to, I'll attempt in the new camp. So the school committee in the fall, it seems like a lifetime ago, in the fall, was able to negotiate a settlement with the other side on that. And, but we were, we have, we were not empowered to, to fund it. Town meeting needed to fund it. So we went to Town Meeting and said this, but the amount, the six million dollars, was the complete and total amount. That is it. There's no interest on top of that? Not, and?
There was a discussion.
And, and just for folks in the community, that was voted positively, that settlement has happened, that is, that is a finished thing.
Done and over.
Oh, it was paid off. Thank you.
So just, cooler heads prevail. Let's, let's look at this plan. I think it's terrific. I think a one-year waiting period is not going to devastate the town if we just shouldn't jump into another override too soon.
So I just wanted to thank Paula and John for your guidance tonight. That was very helpful, and I think that collectively the town can look at, what I understand us to be proposing here, which is an unbalanced budget, and it would be unbalanced by the amount of line items that we've discussed tonight and those values. But I want to be clear that we've also, I believe, adopted, unless we have further amendments, about half, a little more than half, of the proposed reductions that were in the original budget. So it's, we've done quite a bit of work to reduce the cost for, of our schools. Those had negative detrimental impacts, of course, in the community, and we don't want to forget that either. And I think we also make a, need to make a concerted effort to look forward to the future as soon as this budget season is settled and start thinking about how we're going to approach next year because, you know, the costs are going to continue to increase. I don't think enough costs are going to go down between now and a year from now that we won't have challenges next year. Thanks.
Thank you. Anything else from the committee? Yes.
Joey Valveras, probably.
Would you mind going to the microphone in case we are still being taped?
We're being taped, not but.
Just a quick thank you to all of you. You've done so much work, so many hours, the thoughts, all of the thoughts that you've put into this, it's been wonderful. I just wanted to say thank you. Thank the selectmen as well because they were amazing last night, talking about so many different, you know, I- I've never been to a selectmen's meeting, and I appreciated all of their hard work as well. I'm saying thank you on behalf of all the foreign language teachers in the middle schools and in the high school, because we really appreciate it, and now it's time for everybody to talk to their neighbors and to spread the word, and hopefully, things will work out. Thank you.
I want to thank you for what you do for our kids every day, and I do want to clarify that even if we were to go down this road and vote this, it is not funded. That is a discussion for FinCom, so I would not want anyone in the audience or at home to get overly excited that we've solved the problem, it's just an attempt to solve the problem. And to your point, Nick, to solve part of the problem, to solve what we perceive to be the most urgent part of the problem, it certainly doesn't solve it all, at all. Anything else tonight? Okay, really make yourself known if I've, if I've ignored you, because I'm trying not to. At this point, does the committee desire more conversation, or are we ready to take up the two amendments and the motion?
I'm ready for the amendments.
I, I think I'm going to do the amendments first. The first amendment is to increase the RISE tuition from five percent to ten percent to fund the music teacher, I believe. Is that a reasonable motion?
Yep.
Is there, oh, Linda, I actually need you to make that motion, it's yours, not mine. Oh, yeah. Yes.
Can we also, a suggestion would be to approve, to increase the offset to go into the general fund, so...
So do it together. Do it. And I'm going to have Linda, it's, I'm, I'm making a motion that isn't mine. Linda, can you make the motion? If you still would like to.
I definitely would still like to, I'm sorry. I think we're looking at difficult decisions, and again, the least worst decision, and I apologize to those who are counting on RISE, and I hope the extra cost does not deter their, their registration. So my amendment would be that I propose that we raise the tuition of RISE preschool ten percent, and in so doing, increase the offset, that would cover the point five FTE music teacher that is currently slated to be cut.
Point six, sorry. Sorry, point six.
Is that an acceptable motion?
Do you want to increase it an additional five percent?
Oh, it's already a five.
It's already five percent in, in the budget.
I'm sorry. So increase the, five percent increase by another five percent.
Right, and, and increase the offset by thirty thousand.
The amount, thirty thousand, yeah.
And increase the offset by thirty thousand.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any more discussion on the amendment?
I just want to be, just to be clear, so that was, we finally gave that amount as a dollar amount, not the percent, it's a ten percent increase in the fee and a thirty thousand dollar increase in the offset.
Additional thirty two thousand.
Additional, to, from what's in the budget right now. Okay, thank you.
Any...
Could we just get the final, no, dollar value of how much that ten percent is?
Thirty thousand.
We don't know? Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
But you, you can calculate individual fees.
I don't have the digital in mind, I can't, it's a...
Any more discussion on this? I would, I would like, I've already said that I have concerns about this, because applications have already gone out with a certain expectation, I think it's a good idea perhaps for the future, but I just don't think it's the right thing right now. All those in favor of, oh, yeah, Ms., okay, Ms. Webb?
Okay, I just want to comment that I was at first maybe not convinced, but I think hearing from Debbie Buds, hearing from a parent, and recognizing that this, this, this is a pretty dire circumstance, and I, it would be very, it would be very bad for someone who can't make that, and it does sound like there are, there will, that we, we won't have empty spaces, so I, we wouldn't be asking what Ms. Robinson is asking if this wasn't the absolute, this is the worst budget, I've done this for ten years, is the worst budget I've ever been through, so I'm going to support this, even though I understand the letter went out.
And I appreciate that, I think where I'm coming from is a perspective of public trust, I think it, I just think it's important that when we say we're going to do something as a district...
It, it was, wait a minute, it, it said, what is it, it said, up to the...
It says five percent.
It says five percent, but...
If approved.
If approved.
It's not approved.
Pending school committee approval, we didn't approve it.
We were looking at it that it would be either nothing or five percent, I wasn't thinking nothing or ten percent, but I have just...
I really appreciate your impact, and I think that's what I'm, you know, we can understand the intricacies, and well, the school committee hasn't voted, and the school committee went in a different direction. I'm a parent, I got that letter, you established a certain expectation, and you just changed it, and I wasn't expecting it, that will happen, and if the, if the, if the, if this, saving this position is worth that in the community, then I can deal with it, but that's absolutely going to happen.
Hi, I'm looking at this from both sides, I'm looking also at this by the, the imposition on the high school teacher...
Yep.
Going to the preschool, and I think that our teachers have given and given and given, and I, I feel apologetic that this changed, but it was dependent on school committee approval, and I had no thought, but I just...
Can I just add, add to that? I think the other thing that this does is it allows us to retain the music teacher who's, who I, as long as that person isn't uncertain about this district and leaving, it would be retaining the person who's currently been working in this role and supporting, working with the young kids versus having a music teacher who's used to working with high school students, working with the very youngest in our district, and I'm not saying that that high school teacher could not do that, I'm just saying that I think it's best for the students to have that kind of consistency, and, and, you know, on the municipal side, I know one of the things that they talked about, I mean, their, their situation with, with the reduction in their budget and not having to actually reduce as many actual people is very different than ours, so they haven't had to do that, and they have been looking to, how do you maintain the morale of the people who are going to continue to work there? So I think that this is a really small step to maintaining the morale i- in this program, and I, maybe people will interpret it as that we're not as trustworthy as other members, I don't know, but if that's the case, then I, I guess I, that is how they...
Oh, I don't mean individual members, I meant the, the schools as a group.
The other, the other question I was going to ask was, as I understand it, there is scholarship help, so if that five to ten percent, that jump from five to ten percent were to push someone over the edge, would we be able to help someone?
There's no scholarship, it's, it's qualified by, we're reduced much.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's the only way.
You shouldn't say, right, you should never say scholarship, we should...
Sorry. So if someone's...
Tuition reduction.
They would already be enjoying that benefit right now.
It's a financial qualification-based tuition reduction, and...
Either by free...
They would probably get it anyway.
Okay, thank you, sure.
Any other discussion from the committee? Ms. Williams?
I just want to say something, my daughter is currently at RISE, and I pay the tuition, and the five percent bump was a big jump for us, I have another one that's going to be going to preschool, and it's just, it's going to stretch our budget if you do the ten percent, and then you have the override, the potential override, it, it literally, I'll have to move out of Reddit, it's going to just, it's going to decimate me, I know that ten percent doesn't sound like a lot, but if you add all these things up over time and the fees that people are, are looking at, it's, it's, it's getting scary, literally.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Are we ready for a vote? All those in favor of the proposed amendment on RISE for preschool tuition? All those opposed? The amendment does not pass three-three. The next amendment is Mr. Boavon's amendment, I'm going to have you make it, it is involving, good luck, I'm, it's your amendment.
I don't remember it.
Gail, could you brief me on how to talk about offsets, please?
Gail, we need you to tell us what amendment he wants to make.
Repeat after me, except I'll repeat after you.
Okay, good. I'm just, sorry, I'm trying to keep up with all of them so we know at the end of the day. So for the athletics, the proposal is to increase the fee but to keep the family cap where it currently is.
And do you happen to have those numbers available? We could find them in the proposal.
What, what it was?
No, no, you're not increasing the, the fee is part of the budget, regular budget.
The fee is part of it, it's just, we're, we're just going to keep the family cap flat with where it currently is.
To modify the existing budget, your motion is to modify the existing budget to reduce the family cap.
Keep the family cap.
No, 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 in the budget.
In the budget, keep back to its original.
The budget right now, so the budget that exists right now.
To bring the family cap.
The motion is to reduce the family cap from, what's in the budget right now?
Can we get the numbers, what it is now and what it was before?
Do you know what I mean?
Just so it's very clear.
How about bring the family cap back to two thousand seventeen levels?
There you go.
The family cap.
And do we need to talk about offsets to do that?
Yes, we would need to then...
Is that a separate motion or the same motion?
Same.
Same, same.
Interesting, thank you.
So, and then we would also recommend reducing the athletics offset by the eighty-two fifty.
Eight thousand twenty-five.
And should we use the number eighty-two fifty or some language about whatever the resulting cost of the cap and the fee, the fee cap change?
We, we would say by the, we would reduce the offset by, it's, it'll actually be...
The corresponding amount, how's that?
Yeah.
Because we don't know exactly, so, okay, so I'm going to make a motion to reduce the family cap in the superintendent's proposed FY eighteen budget to twenty-seventeen levels for athletics, and to reduce the athletic offset by a corresponding amount.
Is there a second?
Can I just call for, you said...
Can I get a second, just before?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Nian.
If you could clarify, I thought previously you said athletics and extracurriculars.
I believe they're separate motions.
Oh, okay.
Any other comments or questions?
I'm really torn, because we're struggling with the revolving account, the athletic revolving account, we found a way to keep it viable, because the swimming and the rink are costing us less than we anticipated, so that would be a way to keep that viable and not raise fees on everybody again so soon, but instead, we're not raising the cap on a few people, and I struggle because I know how expensive, for instance, hockey is, and people are used to paying that, those funds, and so I'm struggling with this budget. I just, it's, it's a source of offset that we might have access to when we need it, but I hate making people pay more, so I'm torn.
The total dollar amount is quite small, isn't it? It is about eight thousand dollars, so it's a very tiny amount of money for what it's worth.
Twenty-five families, I think, well, twenty-five families that are affected right now.
We don't have to, my attitude is, we don't have to make another cut, we can potentially reduce the burden on families, and it's coming from some savings, and it's a very small amount of money, so I can support it. Any other comments in the committee? All those in favor of the proposed amendment, it passes six-zero. Before we...
Extracurriculars, same thing.
Oh.
It's a separate cap.
Then you got to...
Yep. Gail, I need your help again here, I'm going to do the same thing, but let me know if there's any differences. Is there a cap for extracurriculars for families right now? And is that being raised in the FY eighteen budget?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to, I'm making a motion to reduce the family cap in the superintendent's proposed FY eighteen budget, as it occurs in the school committee budget, to FY seventeen levels, and to reduce the, no offsets, just reduce the cap.
Just reduce the cap.
Okay, thank you, that's my motion.
Second from Mr. Robinson, any comments or... All right, we're ready for a vote, all those in favor of the proposed amendment, it passes six-zero. I'm, I'm going to look to this table for a little bit of help with the final motion of the evening, because I do, I, I jotted down a number, and I just really, it would be really bad if we voted the wrong number, so...
Four-nine, no, nine-one-nine-six-six-one?
Thank you.
Is that one of them?
Well, I, I think it would be worth actually walking through for the public and for us, so the current superintendent's recommended FY eighteen budget is forty-one million, three-hundred-and-one-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-one, am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Robinson's proposal, do you, is there any way you could walk me through this, or would you like me to do it? Okay.
If you want, you can just...
Read it.
So add back, why don't you do it?
Four-thirty-eight.
Thank you.
Four-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand.
Got it.
A hundred and fifty thousand.
That's raising the fee.
Separate motion?
No, you can...
No.
That's a, that's a wash, though.
That's a wash.
Oh, that's a wash, right?
But we have to vote on it.
But you have to raise, you have to, you have to raise the fee.
I think we should address this completely separately.
Okay.
Don't, don't include this.
Okay. Oh, now, once, that's fine, too, so it's just those two.
It's five-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand.
Five-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand.
Eighty-eight thousand.
Five-hundred...
Five-eighty-eight, yeah.
Okay. And, did you add that to the...
It, it does add up to the forty-one-eight-eight-nine-six-six-one.
Can you repeat that, Mrs. Webb?
Forty-one million, eight-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-one.
Okay, that's forty-one million, eight-hundred-and-eighty-nine-six-hundred-and-sixty-one, and because I actually would really like us to vote a final number...
Should do it, yes.
Yeah. I'm trying to think of how to logistically do this, I'd like to do the kindergarten fee included in, yeah, I'm going to ask you to add that to your motion. I'm sorry, no, I said, I'm changing my mind.
And, and fifty thousand for the kindergarten educators.
To be gotten from raising...
To, to be you, to be...
Raised.
Raised, to be appropriated by raising kindergarten fee.
By two-hundred-and-fifty dollars per student.
By two-hundred-and-fifty dollars per student.
Okay.
And increase, and increase the offset.
And increase the offset, use of the offset.
By fifty thousand. By fifty thousand, thank you. It was a brutal motion, but it brings us to a total, it brings us to a total recommended school committee budget of forty-one million, eight-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars. Is that the same math everyone else has got?
What was that? What was your?
Mine was forty-one million, eight-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-one.
Thank you, yes.
Is that what you have?
Yes, I thought, I heard eighty-one, and I lost forty dollars.
Apologies. I think that covers all components of Mr. Robinson's proposal. Any discussion around this? Are we ready for a vote? All those in favor? The motion passes six-zero. At this point, I do not believe we will be having a meeting on Monday night, Dr. Doherty.
Unless you want it all to get together.
It's been real, but a night off might do us all some good. Mrs. Webb has a comment.
I, I just would like to, no, sorry, what the, so now, what does that make our budget cut? I believe after three times, I got page four, figures three and four, our two-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand-four-oh-five, and, and does that make our cut seven-hundred thousand on figure two on page three? I'm just trying to see what the total is. So I take it... You're still cutting the, the parents' educators or even, that's, comes out of the cut? Yeah, and I take it that, okay, so...
Can we, we don't need to do that.
We don't need to, all right, I just want to make sure that we're clear, and so, because so that the community needs to understand that we're still cutting, I think, almost a million dollars.
I get eight-hundred thousand, yeah.
Nick pointed that out earlier, he went through the...
Okay.
Yeah.
Correct. Before we move to the chair, I, I point a privilege of the chair, I really do, we've said thank you before, but we need to say thank you again, the amount of work that Dr. Doherty, Gail, Carolyn, Craig, and all the principals put into this was enormous and not easy, and it is very appreciated by the community. The difficult time the staff is going through, we get it, and we know, it is truly a pleasure to work with the five of you, so thank you for your hard work on this. I'd also like to thank the unprecedented number of community members who've come out over the last month to advocate, to share your ideas... out over the last month to advocate, to share your ideas. That's been very helpful. In teachers, I'm sorry, in teachers, of course, the whole community. The, the final thing I'd like to say, and I think Mr. Bobbin has a comment, is what I learned from this experience, this budget, is the problem of a $1.4 million deficit is not a problem that can be solved by the school committee. It's clearly not a problem that can be solved by the administration, and it can't be solved by the school committee. We really are going to need some community support to get out of the precarious situation our schools are in.
I want to thank everybody that I've had the privilege of serving with, and I mean that, everyone at this table, very hardworking, very thoughtful, exceptional number of hours, but I also wanted to thank the people that are not here. Each of us has friends, family, loved ones who have not seen us in a very long time, and for those people, if they're still up, thank you. Enormous sacrifices that you made for us to do this and serve the community. Thank you all.
You're right, Mr. Bobbin. And with that, do I hear a motion?
Yeah. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, 6-0. We're adjourned.